Thank you so much for being here today to hear an update on where we've been as it relates to safety and security within our district. And so what you'll hear today, I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that we've done. And this really is going back to the incidents at Lawrence High back in February. We had two community meetings, if you recall, back in February where February 21st, we were at Lawrence High and then on March 26th, we were at Free State. And if many of you attended those sessions, thank you. And the purpose of those sessions were to come out into the community, to involve the community in solving this issue, hopefully getting some more information and suggestions around safety as it relates to those particular incidents. Because what we're finding, what we found out was the two weapon incidents that happened within the week at Lawrence High, those weapons came from home. And so what we wanted to do is engage not only parents, community members, Lawrence Police Department, we engaged them, as well as Be Smart Deb Boatwright, who's in the audience, you probably saw her as you were coming in. And just ask several questions around what do you feel the district is doing well as it relates to safety and security and where do you view the gaps? And then we wanted to provide some additional, we wanted you to provide some additional information to us. We collected all of that data, we compiled it, well, I'm not going to say "we" because I was not the one typing all of that, I think it was Julie that was typing all of that. And then we began to put some things into action. And so this was in February, and so we were able to also survey our students. And these are some of the questions that we asked our students. One is, "I feel like I belong." Seventy-nine percent, and this is both of our high schools represented here. "I feel like I belong." Seventy-nine percent said they agree or strongly agree. "I feel like I'm a part of this school." Seventy-eight percent. "I feel safe at this school." Sixty-eight percent either agree or strongly agree that they felt safe at the school. So if you think about that, if we lined 100 high school students up across here, 32 of them would feel as if they don't feel safe. Just one student that doesn't feel safe is a problem. And so we wanted to take this data and we also talked to students. Yes, we got the survey data, the quantitative data, we also sat down with our students. We were in the midst of developing our strategic plan. And so we were able to go out and talk to students about safety. And they gave us some amazing feedback that we wrote down, collected, and actually put into our strategic plan. They're the ones that's living this day in and day out. And so as a result of that, we developed our five-year strategic plan. And I will tell you, we went in with the "safe and supportive schools," that was not a theme at the draft when we took that out. We received the feedback from the students and they wanted to add that language specifically around safety. We were approaching it more from a student support standpoint, but they wanted us to spell out that safety piece in our school improvement plan. So just a reminder, this is our goal and our strategic plan. And so we want to ensure that all students of all races and backgrounds and abilities achieve at high levels, demonstrate proficiency in reading by third grade and math by eighth grade, and graduating on time, prepared for success in college and careers. That's beautiful. That's a very attainable goal. However, if I'm not feeling safe, I could care less about your reading passage in the second grade. If I'm not feeling safe, I could care less about your equation activity that I'm doing at a high school. And so in order for us to get here, it's incumbent upon us that we make sure that we are putting some systems in place, listening to our staff, listening to our students, and putting some systems in place so that students feel safe in their school. And so as a result of our community conversations, as a result of us going back out, talking to students and surveying students, we developed our theme around "safe and supportive schools." And the two initiatives within this theme are encourage positive student behaviors and reduce behaviors that interfere with learning, and provide a safe and welcoming school that engages every student. And so one of the things that we did shortly after the weapons incidents at Lawrence High, we did it at Lawrence High and we did it at Free State. And I do want to take a moment to acknowledge our staffs from both of those schools. We have Lawrence High Administration team, wave your hand. And we have Free State Administration in the back. And so what they did, they engaged both students, both sets of students. Because when I went and talked to the student, many of you heard this story before, when I went and talked to the student that brought the second weapon incident and asked him, you know, why he brought the weapon, and he shared that with me, and then asked him, did he tell anybody? He said, "He told his parents." And I asked, "Did he tell anybody at school?" Now, both of our high schools are fairly large. He said, "No, he didn't tell anybody at the school." And I asked him, I said, "Do you feel like you could have told somebody? Or you feel like you had somebody that you could talk to at the school?" And he said, "No." And so what both schools did, they engaged students in a process where they gave them an index card or a sheet of paper and told them to write their name down, and then list an adult or many adults that they felt they had a connection to or that they felt comfortable talking to. Those students that did not have anybody or felt like they didn't have anybody, they were just to simply write "no one." And so the schools collected those cards or sheets of paper and began to pair students up with caring adults in those buildings. And what they were finding is that even some staff would say that, "Well, I see this kid every day, I talk to him, he's in my class." But there again, that was our perception as it relates to how we feel we're making connection with the students, but the students felt a different way. And so that was really, I would say to our staff, probably eye-opening to them for the number of students that they had. It wasn't a large amount of students, but quite a few. And so I guess an unintended consequence of that was we engaged the teachers. And so we, I wouldn't say "we," the schools did all of this work. They listed all of the teachers, that names showed up numerous amounts of time, where students consistently or different various students listed their names down. And so I was able to sit down with the, with five students from Lawrence High, not students, five teachers from Lawrence High, five staff from Lawrence High, and five staff from Free State. And I just asked them several questions in terms of, one, letting them know that their names showed up numerous times, and then asked them, you know, "What do you do to foster relationships?" Because what we learned is that, and I like this, is that, as a child who is not embraced by the village will burn it down to feel its warmth. And so what we learned that these students that are not connected or felt like they're not connected, what do they do? They bring in weapons to the school because they didn't feel connected or they didn't feel like they had someone to talk to. And so we looked at some research around, and I'll share that with you in just a moment, from the Department of Homeland Security and Secret Service. But this kept constantly coming up, relationships, school connectedness. And typically, schools and school districts that experience a weapon incident, they immediately go to the hardening of schools, meaning putting equipment in schools to hopefully deter a weapon coming in. But what we found was, what they shared, when I say "they," Homeland Security and Secret Service, is that relationships matters. And so there's not a teacher or staff person in this district that does not value the importance of relationships. But I think we can do a better job of providing PD around the "how." And so we've identified a framework to establishing relationships in our building, and they're listed there on the screen. These five action steps within this framework, research-based framework, is there to guide our staff in terms of fostering those relationships. And so this is what the Homeland, Department of Homeland Security and Secret Service released, and we passed this out at our community conversations on safety. But I want to point this one out here. This is what Secret Service and Department of Homeland Security is saying, "Build relationships." And I won't read all of it to you, but I will read that last sentence here. "Ensure each student has a trusting relationship with an adult, whether it's a teacher, coach, member of the custodial staff, or a school nurse." Ensure that each student has a trusting relationship. So that's what we began to tackle and began to come up with and put this in our strategic plan. And so what we know is, relationships matters. And when I pulled those teachers together, and I was thinking about the questions that I would ask them, and when I said, "I'm going to ask them, how do you build relationships with your students?" And when I thought about asking that question, I knew that I would probably get dead silence because those that do it and do it well probably can't share how they go about building relationships. And so through working with Rachel over in our Communications Department and Julie, we've crafted or developed three videos that we'll push out for professional development for all of our teachers. And so I just want to share a quick snippet, about three or four minute snippet of those conversations that we had with those teachers. I'm going to start it over because I don't want them to start talking. It's still just coming out of this projector here.
So not only are there added benefits from an academic standpoint, but if you go back to the weapon incidents and creating these safe environments, how can building relationships and making those connections with students foster a safe place where students feel comfortable coming to you?
Because he's a, we can trust him about anything, and he always gives us like good advice, and he doesn't like just give us what we want to hear, he gives us like actual good advice, like what we should do.
With those connections, you'll start having kids that when they miss class, they apologize. Because they feel obligated, like they feel like they're letting you down without you going, "Why are you missing class?" And you come back and say, "Hey, are you doing okay? I didn't see you." "Oh, I'm so sorry, I had blah, 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 blah." Instead of just like, "I hate school, I'm not coming."
In my, one of my evaluations, because I have my students, you know, fill those out at the end of the year to just get ideas for next year, and one student wrote that the only time he was ever like, didn't want to come to class was when he didn't do the reading, and it was because he didn't want to let me down. And I was like, and yes, right there, that is the benefit, I think, to relationships. Because if they don't know you or care about you, they don't feel like that, you know? And so I think it absolutely pays dividends.
And I don't always get to know the students who are not involved in the fine arts. So being in Lake Crew was one of the ways I've gotten to know them, or just showing up at, like my kids who play soccer, they come to my choir concerts, same with the Kansas City, so I show up to their things that are outside of school, and then I'll meet other students. And I mean, I can talk to a wall, I can talk to anyone. So talking to students is no different for me than talking to an adult I would meet on the street. And I try to treat them like they're human rather than a child or a student who doesn't know as much as me. I want to get to know things about them. So I've done that, I go to lunchroom sometimes and just randomly sit, like I'll sit with a kid I know, but there might be four other people at the table I don't know. And I'll just sit in lunch with them that day and kind of get to know them. And I say hi to kids in the hallway that I see. I visit some of the rooms, we have some identified students in the classroom. So I'll just go down to the room and see what their life is like in room 132 or in 214 or whatever it is, and try to learn more about them as a person. And then you learn other, you meet other people.
A little off topic here, but you know, my main rule is, don't bring food into this classroom or the shop. And we had a kid that got rear-ended on his way to lunch, so it took all his time and he showed up with a sandwich. And I was like, "Hey, you can't bring food in here." And he was like, "Well, wait, I got rear-ended." And I didn't have time to eat. And I said, "Well, we're just going to have to hold a trial about this sandwich." And so he pleaded his case, and students and I, we all came to a verdict that we're going to allow him to eat the sandwich. And it took 60 seconds to, you know, go through it, but man, they were laughing so hard about this, and they still talk about it. And that's, you know, I have a kid right now, he's in that, he was very big into that, and he's completely opened up after that. Like I know all about this kid's life now, what's going on, and it makes a lot of sense now to some of the things he's been doing. And now I could really start to help that kid.
She pays attention to us. She knows if we're having a bad day or a good day, and she kind of gauges upon how, I don't know, she teaches with us at that point.
Nobody's perfect. I'm certainly not perfect at this. Just keep trying and being authentic, do your way of connecting. And kids appreciate realness.
So this is just a reflective question that we'll use during PD and that we want teachers to begin to have some discussions about the clip that they saw in that video. So there are three, and this is just a snippet, each one of the clips are about 12 minutes. And so you have teachers sharing things, sharing strategies around how they connect with students and build relationships with students. These are the things that we have control over and that we can definitely begin to and continue to implement. Because here's the thing, if a student knows that you genuinely care about them, if it's just one person, someone on the custodial team, a coach, security guard, if it's just one person, they don't want to let you down. And so when they're thinking about maybe bringing a weapon in the building, they're immediately thinking of that one person. So we also, most recently, this semester surveyed all of our staff at our high schools. And we will survey our students when they return in January. In the past, the way we've done surveys, we've done surveys at the end of the year. And so going forward this year, we're doing these surveys twice a year so we can get some data in the middle of the year and have some opportunities to improve before the end of the year. But this is current survey, most recent survey data that was taken in the fall. Both of our high schools there, staff feel welcome, I'm sorry, students feel welcome and comfortable in talking to staff and/or designated counselors. That's good. That's good. There again, this is how our staff are feeling. And so we'll definitely capture some data and share when our students return. So what we also heard, we have some amazing staff in this district, we have some amazing social workers, mental health providers, partners over at Burt Nash, school counselors. But what we heard from students and some parents is, is that we don't know who these people are. Okay? And so what we wanted to do, again, responding to what we heard, created another video that we'll share with students, family members, around who some of these amazing people are. All right, we have another video.
...high school. We are here to serve your social, emotional, and academic needs.
Hi, my name is Renee Robinson, I'm one of the RAP social workers. If you're feeling down or need somebody to talk to, come to us and we'll see what we can do.
Hello, my name is Maren Santelli, I'm a special education social worker. Lawrence High School collaborates with Just Foods to provide free groceries to students and their families.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Book, I'm one of the counselors at Lawrence High School. If you need any extra help with the KU Blueprint concurrent enrollment classes or ACT, you can come into Student Services and ask.
Hi, I'm Laura Bogart, and I'm part of your mental health team. If you need to talk to someone, please come and see us in Student Services.
Hola, soy la doctora Silvia Treviño Mac, la psicóloga de la escuela Lawrence High. Si tienes algún problema, o estres, o te sientes triste, por favor venos a ver a la oficina de servicios al estudiante, Student Services, aquí te vemos.
Hi, I'm Amy Brown, I'm the newest counselor here at Lawrence High. Come see us in Student Services if you have any questions about college or any kind of career readiness.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Nicolet, I'm one of the RAP workers in Student Services, and part of what I help with is finding community resources for families who may need something.
My name is Carissa Welsh, I am one of the Gen Ed social workers in Student Services. If you are experiencing stress that is overwhelming, that distracts you from the classroom, just come see us.
My name is Jennifer Hare, if you have any questions about college board, like AP classes or the PSAT, come see me in Student Services.
Hi, I'm Lenisha Thomas, I'm a school social worker. If you're having any anxiety about things that are going on at home or at school, come see me, I'll hook you up.
And so we have one of those for each one of our high schools. And we just wanted to get the message out, we know students may see these people in the buildings, we wanted to just get the message out, not only to students but families as well, that we have people here that are here to support you no matter what you may be facing. And so that was the Lawrence High incident that happened in the spring, and then there have been a few other incidents that have happened. And here's the thing, anytime we run a drill, there's things that we learn from. And so Ron May is going to come and share with you some of the action steps that we've already taken and will continue to take as it relates to safety and security. Ron May.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ron May, I'm the Director of Safety, Security, and Administration for the district. And like Dr. Lewis said, we're wanting to talk about, as we've taken input from community, from staff, from students, we have put together some action steps that can be found on the website, on the district website. And so these are some of the things that we've done, that we've addressed, and some things that are ongoing. So obviously, my first bullet is the building relationships. That is very important to our district, and as Dr. Lewis mentioned, when you talk to Department of Homeland Security, you talk to Secret Service, they all talk how building relationships is the number one way to be proactive in preventing events in buildings. It's about feeling safe, about feeling secure, it's about feeling like I can go talk to somebody whether or not I'm considering doing something, or if I see something happening, I feel comfortable with going to somebody and letting them know that and that I'm going to be heard and believed. Back in the middle of September, we conducted a security audit of all of our buildings with a Department of Homeland Security representative. He and I walked through every building and spent at least an hour, if not longer, in some of the larger buildings, obviously. Just going through and looking at how the school's laid out, how things are happening in school, what does it take to get into the building, to get out. I'm happy to report that we didn't have any glaring issues that needed, you know, that said, "This is a really big problem, you need to solve right this minute." We did have a lot of small things that were kind of became themes, and I have some of those listed, improving signage in buildings as far as exits and fire extinguishers and where AEDs are, just making them more easy to see, easy to get through. Enhancing our building maps, we have building maps in the rooms with evacuation routes, but also using those to mark where are those things, where are the utility shut-offs, where are the AEDs and things like that. Along with that, training utilities, training staff how to turn off the utilities in the event of a fire or a tornado or something like that. You know, most of the time, your maintenance staff may know where that is, but you need to have more people in the building that know how to locate and turn those things off. And adding monitors in the buildings, so we have cameras throughout the district, obviously, and we want to add some monitors so that staff can see some of those in the offices. And it's also a deterrent, many of you see that when you walk into Walmart or some places like that, you'll see a little monitor that says, "You're on camera," and you'll see your face on there, it just kind of gives you that visual reminder. We were asked, as we started construction projects, especially at LHS, that we wanted to make sure that we had security in mind there. So we did take, we took some measures, like for instance, it's a large open campus, we fenced much of that campus off so that it's not easily walked onto. And then also, we are keeping doors locked, and students have been issued photo IDs that also have door access so that they can go in and out, and we can keep those doors locked down without having to have security there to watch necessarily. And then we have Power School Team working right now on mass texting capabilities so that we can keep in better contact and communication with staff and with parents if we do have an incident occurring. We've added some things to our website, many of you may have seen this already, but I've got some screenshots of a couple of the pages, we have the "all students safe" added to the website, there's bullying reporting, there's safety concern reporting, and there's also a place where you can click to ask for more information. We have the "Contact Us" tab on all of our websites, and that is, that's used for reporting anything, if you have a concern, if you don't feel comfortable going to a person or you don't know who to call, you can send, you can basically send an email and it'll get funneled to the right person to respond to that. The Be Smart Gun Safety, we had the Be Smart presentations last year, again, they're here tonight handing out information, we've distributed information to families and we've added their information on the websites as well. And we are in an ongoing, constantly revising and reviewing our crisis plans in the district. Most recently, we've added back in a lockdown, more of a non-emergency lockdown situation. Just a brief explanation, in the past, many districts, most districts, were using lockdown shelter in place as a reaction to an active intruder in a building. Meaning, you go into the room, lock the door, shut off the lights and be quiet, and hope that nothing else happens beyond that. That's been shown across the country to not be a very effective policy to follow. So last year, we started with Alice, and I'll talk a little more about that, Alice Training with Active Intruder, using their protocols. But we took the lockdown out, and that's something we felt like we needed to put back into place. And it's, in this type of a lockdown, we're talking about a situation where there may be something happening in a hallway, like there may be in a medical emergency, there could be a fight or something like that, something that's not necessarily endangering the whole building, but we need to keep people out of the hallway so there would be a lockdown We were asked by the community to investigate metal detectors and clear backpacks, and we did some investigation on that and came up, you know, with some different, came up with some different points that we needed to consider there. Interestingly, one of the big things that the research shows is that security or safety is a perception for people. What may make, what may make me feel safe may make you feel unsafe. And metal detectors are actually one of those big polarizing subjects where one person walking into a building that they're going through a metal detector, they may feel, "Oh, this is going to be very, very safe because you're checking everybody." And somebody else may look at that and say, "If you have to check people for weapons, this is not a safe place to be." So that was really almost a 50/50 split from the research that I read. New York City schools, they've been using metal detectors for some time, and they did some, from 2014 and 15, they had over 1,600 weapons confiscated from their buildings. And by 2016, 17, three years later, that number was up to 2,100. So to me, that says that that's not a deterrent necessarily. I will also add that only 57% of those weapons that were taken were taken at the site of the metal detector. The rest of those, the 43%, were taken elsewhere in the building through investigation, through searches or whatever, it did not occur at the point of the metal detector. There's costs to consider with the equipment and training and staffing, the metal detectors and upkeep. And if they're not being used 24/7, then you have a potential situation where if you're not, if you don't have a person, if you don't have people come through the metal detector, every single time someone comes in and out of the building, that leaves open an opportunity for somebody to stash a weapon somewhere for a later time. So these are things to consider if that's something you wanted to do. As far as clear backpacks go, the KASB, Kansas Association of School Boards, we asked them for a legal opinion on them. They're being used across the country, so we know that it's not a Fourth Amendment privacy issue necessarily, but it is still a privacy concern for a lot of students as far as, you know, things that they keep in their backpack that they aren't necessarily keen on having people know that they have, not weapons. And many designs on the backpacks that I read, they're getting better at them, but they do not tend to be as durable as regular backpacks, which means they have to be replaced more often. Alice Training, so we are in our second year of Alice Training, we started it last year. Alice Training has a two-phase approach, it's a, first of all, we have an online module that all staff in our district and Boys and Girls Club, people even though they're not our staff, we included them because they have, they are taking care of our kids in our buildings after hours. So they have an online module that is assigned to each individual, the individual goes online, they take the course, they watch the video, they answer questions, and at the end, they have a test they have to take, and you have to pass it 100%. So we've been, we do that, and then the second portion of that training, we have six sub- And then, the second portion of that training, we have six, I believe now, certified Alice Trainers, myself, Tony Barron, SROs, that we come out to the buildings as a staff, and we conduct, we have a conversation first, you know, just kind of talk through some of the techniques and the things that we've learned, answer questions, and then we actually go into the building and do some scenario training with the staff members only, not with students. Staff has access to a new online student curriculum. One of the big questions we received last year when we were doing Alice Training is, "How do we talk to our kids about this? What do we need to be saying?" So, Alice actually provided some curriculum this year that we are showing staff how to access that and how to use it, what, through some videos. And there's, at the lower level, the K3 level, there's actually a little children's book with some activities that's been written that can be used. And then, we've added resource links on our website for the community. And also, just to make sure everybody understands, Alice is not just for school districts. It's out there for anybody, and anybody can actually go online to alistraining.com. You can pay them, I think it's $30, and you can take their course and get certified. And one of the things that our instructor even said was, "Well, you know, invite your neighbors over, and everybody pitch in a couple bucks and take the course together." We have been working a little bit more, we're working with the substitute teachers and Morgan Hunter, the company that provides, that we work through to get substitute teachers. We know that they've been provided with some opportunities for active shooter, active intruder training, and we're just working with, make sure that they are receiving that and that we're getting feedback on that. And we're also making sure that our onboarding process, so when a substitute teacher shows up to the building, that they're not just getting shoved down to the room without being given some information, "Here's our procedures, please review these crisis procedures, here's how the door fob works," those kinds of things. Drills, we, the state for the second year in a row, well, I guess I should say third year now, we have a different drill requirement from the state. This year, we're required to conduct two tornado drills, four fire drills, and three crisis drills. Crisis drills, by definition, is a very broad topic. It doesn't just mean active intruder, although I think that was the spirit of what, you know, a lot of what they bring up. But, it also includes evacuations due to gas leak. It can be a number of items, and these are things that we've actually done in our district. We've evacuated buildings before because of gas leaks in the neighborhood from construction. Principals are documenting the drills, and then buildings are submitting any work orders that are discovered from the drills. Another one of those things, again, when we do drills, we don't expect perfection necessarily. We would prefer to learn what's not working right so that we can fix those situations. So, any work orders for doors, if intercoms aren't working correctly or inefficiently, things like that, we're getting that information, and we're working to try to address those. We came out with a poster, I believe, was that done, Julie? I'm sorry. Okay. It's on, so, the packets of information, there's actually a, you may have a, yes, thank you, you have a copy of that. This is just a condensed version of a few of our protocols for lockout, for building lockout, for classroom lockdown, and for Alice. It's not every single little minute step that we have in the crisis plan, but these are the important things that at a glance, somebody can have those. We're distributing those to buildings, to place in classrooms and wherever else they need to, also so that they can put copies in subfolders. And then, we're also having them printed in Spanish and any other languages that we need to have printed as well. We're distributing crisis announcement scripts. These are, again, for these main three procedures that you see here, making scripts so that if somebody has to make that announcement, being sure that they have something to read or something to guide them. Excuse me. If none of you have had the pleasure of being in a very intense situation like that, no matter how well you prepare yourself or how eloquent you are of a speaker, whenever your adrenaline's running and something's happening around you, the words just don't come out right a lot of times. So, having a script in front of you to start with is very important, so that's why we're doing that. We're communicating with the Lawrence Police Department just to make sure that we are letting them know when we're doing certain types of drills, or if we have a situation in the building, that they know ahead of time that it's going on, so that if they're receiving other calls or any information, that they have it, that they can confirm or double-check on it. And then, we continue to update and expand our video surveillance. We have a lot of cameras in the district. We have to keep, it's hard to keep them all maintained, trying to keep them all working properly, turned in the right direction, cleaned up, and that the software itself is working properly. These are our ongoing steps, things that we're still working on. Some of them we've addressed or begun addressing, others are still things to come. We obviously have safety and, we have suicide prevention hotlines that are already available through the state and through other agencies. But, we are investigating some, an application or a texting hotline to see if we can use that to be more effective as well. And we're working with Douglas County Prevention also with things that we can be doing to improve. We're going to have the high schools talk a little bit about open lunch discussion. You know, we know there's always, it's always a topic of discussion when it comes to safety, and we're not looking for anything specific, just, we just want to make sure we have the discussion to know what needs to be done to make it as safe as possible, or if there's anything that needs to be changed. Excuse me. Prevention and early warning signs at the elementary and middle school. Again, this kind of goes back to building relationships. How do we identify early on that there may be a concern? We have community circles that we're using at the elementary level as one of our modes to gather this information. Middle school advisory is a place where some of these kinds of conversations can take place. And then, we're also looking at enhancing our formal threat assessment procedure as well. Radios, we have lots of radios and walkie-talkies in the district. Some are by building, some are at the district level. We're just wanting to make sure that we have a current, you know, a good, in the past, they've mostly been, they're done kind of at the buildings, so not all buildings have the exact same thing, and some different buildings need different equipment because it's a lot, you know, Free State's a very, very large building that covers a lot of space, and so, radios need to have, be able to obviously have a different strength than some buildings. But, we also are looking at potentially having a smaller radio system that would be more centralized so that you would have, you know, only, you know, one or two radios in a building that would communicate directly with the district office that needed to, and also with law enforcement or first responders if needed. Electronic door locks, we have electronic door locks at the elementary and middle school levels, and we still continue to work on making sure that they're maintained properly. They take batteries, and the batteries die, so, you know, making sure that we're getting those replaced correctly because like, not like with the things we have at home, that we can replace, I can replace the battery in this remote pretty easily. Not that simple of a job. If just, there's little intricacies, and just putting one thing in a little bit wrong, the lock won't work at all. So, making sure that that plan is working well and that the right people are fixing them, making sure that the staff is trained properly on how to use their locks and fobs, so we're addressing that in some of the Alice Training and also through a video that's been created. And then, we're also investigating options for enhancing or improving our intercom system. In all of our buildings, we have different levels of intercoms, or there were mass notification systems, and, you know, it doesn't matter how new or how old the building is, or how big or how small it is, you're always going to have dead spots and/or loud areas that doesn't come in, so we're working on several different potential solutions to make sure that those work. I'm going to give it back to Dr. Lewis.
Thank you, Ron. Obviously, when you're dealing with safety and security, it's an ongoing thing. It's never something that you can get to a point where you check the box and say, "Yep, we're safe and secure," but it's an ongoing thing, and it requires and must have continuous feedback and continuous communication with our staff, students, and definitely parents and community members. And so, we want to hear from you as well. And so, while we've done a tremendous amount of work, and we've been doing a lot, a tremendous amount of work in terms of some action steps relative to safety and security, we by no means think that we have everything under control, and so, we want to definitely hear from you. You talk to your students daily. You know maybe some of the things that they're sharing with you, and so, we want to hear that from you. And so, we've created a, well, there I go, I say, we, Julie and Rachel has created a QR code. I think it's on your, on the feedback form. And it's asked these four simple questions for consistency of our data. What does our community, including our school districts, do well in providing for the safety and security of our children and youth? Still, after hearing the presentation tonight, what are some gaps that may exist in providing for the safety and security of our children and youth? And what additional steps and resources should be considered to strengthen the safety and security of our children and youth? And then, finally, what additional information would you like to share? Well, there may have been something that we missed, but we want to definitely hear that from, hear from you. And so, this is an easy way for us to kind of collect this data. There again, lesson learned, we did the post-it notes and chart paper, and Julie had to type all of that in, and so, this is an easy way for us to collect this data from you tonight. And so, with that, do you have any questions? So, the good thing, oh, I'm sorry. Good thing this has been streamed live, and you can go back and review it. But, anytime that you notice an issue or just have a concern or an idea, while we want to collect this feedback tonight, you can always talk to your students, principal or teacher if there's anything that you notice. And so, we've, like I said, we've done, taken some steps. Every time we're learning something, we're constantly taking steps, and that's the thing that we want to do. What can we do to get better as it relates to safety and security? But, there again, what we know works is those meaningful adult relationships and those connections with our staffs. And typically, if you go home and ask your children, "Who is that person?" I encourage you to do just that. Who is that staff member that you feel comfortable talking to? Or typically, the easy way to ask the question is, "Who is your favorite teacher? Who is your favorite staff person at the school?" And then, I would encourage you to ask them why. And the answer you get from that why is what that teacher's doing or that staff person is doing to build those relationships. And so, we have a lot of community partners, we have a lot of parents that are on board with us and providing ideas. I've had some meetings with several parents. We have a staff person right here that's been doing security for how many years? Just 20 years. And so, we're going to lean on everyone in this room. You often hear me say, "The answers are in the room." The answers to ensuring that our most valuable, precious students are safe, the answers are definitely in this room, and we want to hear from you. So, I want to give you an opportunity to complete that survey. We do, there again, I want to acknowledge Deb Bortwright in the back again. Thanks to Shannon. We will be presenting at the KSB Conference in Manhattan on, it's not in Manhattan, it's in Wichita.
Wichita.
In Wichita on December the 7th. And we will talk about how we came together as a community to wrap our arms around our school and this, and our students, around the action steps that we've taken and continue to take around student safety. We do have a board meeting, and we definitely encourage you to stay for it. We will be hearing from our staff around high school start time. And so, President Johnson, do you want to end this and go right into the board meeting?
Yes, we're going to go right into it.
All right, thank you.
Call to order, the November 25th Board Meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, we'll have a special recognition of some of our high school students. I'd like to call up Myron Graber and Dr. Cynthia Johnson, our Free State and Lawrence High School administrators, who, as well as the Free, any of the scholars that are here to be recognized, who are able to attend this evening. Afterwards, Deana Johnston, Executive Director of Lawrence School Foundation, will recognize our classified ACE Award winners.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to recognize the National Merit Scholars from Free State High School. Sabani Butterreninka. Do you want to step forward, Sabani? Yeah, good. William Burns. Tate Fannishir. Erin Gao. Ian Haas. Julia Holder, I don't believe she's here. Oh, she is here. I made it, okay, good. Spencer Hughes. Charles Johnson. John Lewis. Liam McKinney. Rian Walton. Eli Weisannan. And those are your commended and National Merit semifinalists from Free State High School. Congratulations.
From Lawrence High School, we have Lisa Yang and Amelia Vasquez. Did I pronounce it correctly?
Yeah.
Pronounce it for me. Say it for me, say it for me. Vasquez. Okay, I want to say it right, that's why I stopped and asked. Okay, this represents our commended and National Merit semifinalists from Lawrence High School. Let's give them a round of applause.
While we're shaking our hand, can you tell us a little, just in case the audience that is listening, they don't know about the program, about the awards, the merits?
So, in order to be considered a National Merit Scholar, this is done through the PSAT, which is the National Merit Test, which is given each October to students that wish to take that. They receive an index score based, and each state's index score is a little bit different. I think the index score for the state of Kansas last year was 219 to be a semifinalist and 215 to be commended, I believe. I could be wrong on those numbers a little bit, but it's all based on that. From this point forward then, the finalists are asked to participate in another competition, or the semifinalists are asked to participate in another competition, which takes them to ultimate opportunities for scholarships.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to, oh, sorry.
Okay.
I thought we were doing it separately, so I can apologize.
No, no.
We have two students also that are being recognized tonight as our National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholars. We have Ryan Claycamp. Give him a round of applause, please. As well as Amelia, say it for me, please, Vasquez. Please give them both a round of applause. We are so very proud of our recipients tonight and the hard work that they have put forth for multiple years to be able to get to this point in their lives. So, congratulations to all of our students tonight. Thank you so much.
We won't make you come up and shake our hands again. Congratulations. Congratulations, Scholars. At this time, I'd like to welcome another scholar, our student board member, Sabrina Castle of, Dina's got to come up. Oh, sorry, thank you. That's my shit. At this time, Dina, but I do want to welcome, as Dina Johnston comes up, I want to welcome our student board member, Sabrina Castle from Free State High School. You're treated like any other board member, so if you have any comments that will help us, feel free to do so. If anything you don't have, we value your input.
Thank you. I'm Dina Johnston, the Executive Director with the Lawrence Schools Foundation, and I'm very excited and honored to be here to acknowledge some of our recent award recipients, our ACE Award recipients. If they are here, I know there's a couple here, if you can join me up front, please. I see a couple hiding in the stands. As they come forward, we know it takes a village and some very special people to help ensure the school day flows well for all of our students, our staff, and our family members every day. And working with our local schools, we've been fortunate to understand much of what happens behind the scenes and that it's all too easy to take for granted what keeps our education community and workplaces clean, safe, and functioning. So in 2018, with the assistance of a generous community donor, the Lawrence Schools Foundation was established the ACE Awards. The ACE Award recognizes and applauds classified employees whose efforts benefit students, faculty, and staff and others within and outside the USD 497 community. Students, faculty, classified, and administrative staff may nominate any permanent, part-time, or full-time classified employee. The award recipients will be announced each fall and each spring, but it also receives a $500 award. So some of our, we've been able to acknowledge six. Our Fall 2018 recipients were Abby George from Pickney Elementary, the parent involvement facilitator, Shannon Jones, Sunset Hill Elementary Head Custodian, who's here tonight with us. Our Spring 2019 recipients were James Ortiz, West Middle School Head Custodian, and Margaret Dixon, Hillcrest Elementary Para-educator for the SPED. And then our most recent Fall recipients is Julie Golding, who's here with us tonight from the Lawrence College and Career Center, she's an administrative assistant, and Wendy Avery from Quail Run Elementary. I'm just going to read a couple of things about each of them and embarrass them, put them on the spot while they're here. From Shannon Jones, one of the nominations that came through stated, "Her laughter and happy spirit is infectious. Just try to be around her for more than five minutes and you will find yourself smiling, laughing, and wrapped with the love of a great person. She has never pointed out what her duties are or rejected any requests for help. She comes in during the most extreme conditions to make sure we are safe and able to do our jobs without a second thought. She understands that we are all at sunset for the good of our students, and she will do anything she can to help anyone further this goal." A few words about Julie that were written in her nomination says, "Julie's responsibilities extend beyond the Lawrence College and Career Center. She is the Administrative Assistant for all career and technical education in USD 497 as well. Her attention to detail, whether it will be teacher supply and equipment orders, travel arrangements, or planning needs, is amazing. She always thinks ahead and does whatever she can to support our teachers, our students, and the public. Julie has significant responsibilities when it comes to reporting data for career and technical education and does not hesitate when extra orders, to take extra time, working as late as needed until the job is done. I know our teachers in the USD 497 appreciate how special she makes them feel and how organized she is." So we again want to congratulate the two of you as well as our past recipients, and we look forward to sharing that honor throughout the year. So, congratulations.
At this time, we'll have a report for the President. First of all, again, good evening to those who have just come in. I'm excited for our first off-site board meeting. It is my understanding that it takes a lot of work behind the scenes for this to happen, so thank you to all those involved. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Friends of Education ceremonies and the Bob's Dinner, as well as the American Education Week mixer. Board member Shannon Campbell as well, Shannon Kimble, as well as incoming board members Paula Smith, Carol Cadoo Blackwood, and Erica Hill were in attendance. Carol and I participated in the raffle drawings and handed out the baskets. I was excited to see such creative baskets, and if you were a winner, congratulations. I was the one who pulled your ticket. However, if you didn't win, feel free to email Carol. Thank you to Neil Ballard and the LEA for hosting such a wonderful event. I even had the opportunity to have a little mini reunion with my former court league colleagues. I also attended the New York Site Council meeting where they discussed the progress that has been made on the roof. I know when Vice President Jones was there, there were some things, and I wanted to announce that some progress has been made, there's more work to be done, but our Executive Director of Facilities and Operations plans to follow up with administration after our fall break to discuss the next steps for continuing the repairs. The Site Council is also looking to recruit more parents and community members. I also spoke with Parents of Color Advisory Team, the chairperson, and they will contact a community member who plans to be a part of the Site Council. In the meantime, if you are a New York elementary parent or a community member interested in being a part of the Site Council, please reach out to the administration. This is something that I know, I think the board would benefit. Last but not least, another area of concern is the crosswalk at the intersection of 11th and New York. It was reported that maybe scholars aren't using them consistently, they're not quite at the corner for whatever reason, you know, due to city regs. And it's my understanding that some of the Site Council members came up with some great ideas, but as a board, some of the ideas may, we may have to consider budgetary needs such as crossing guards. They wondered whether, they looked into whether or not they can have volunteers, but it's the understanding that the crossing guards have to be trained and hired, and the city mentioned to them that that's a school board expense. So that's something that we may want to look into in the future. To everyone who will be on, a reminder that tomorrow's the last day of school?
No.
Wednesday? Wednesday, I'm sorry, I'm already off. So.
Tomorrow for students, for students.
Yes, tomorrow for students is the last day of school. Enjoy your time. Sabrina was like, no, I'm done tomorrow. So for those of you who celebrate, Happy Thanksgiving, Happy Fall Break to others. And at this time, we'll have the report of the Superintendent.
All right, good evening again. First of all, I want to thank Myron Graber, Principal here at Free State, and the administration team and staff for allowing us to host our first off-site board meeting here. There are some additional people, our tech guys that have done a tremendous job of getting us set up, so thank you to our tech guys, and also Matthew and Mark with our, back there on the camera, wave your hand, Matthew. Okay. And Mark is up in the booth. Thank you for live streaming this for us, and it will be, like I said, posted on our YouTube channel. Have a few announcements. We announced last week that Quail Run Principal, Principal Dr. Michael Koontz plans to resign in June to return back to Greenbush. The silver lining there is that he will continue to provide support and excellence to our school leadership across the state of Kansas, and so he probably will still be intricately involved in working with principals, not only here in Lawrence but across the state. Our thanks to the staff and board members who attended or donated to the LEA American Education Week mixer on Thursday. The LEA's annual basket raffle, basket raffle and donations raised nearly $3,000 for LEA's scholarship fund, and what they do with these scholarship funds is provide our high school seniors and classified staff who are studying to become teachers, they provide them scholarships. So many thanks to everyone that either attended or gave to our scholarship. And if you didn't come, you missed a treat, I had several jokes that I was sharing that night. I thought they were good. Also, again, want to thank all of our school volunteers that were honored during last week's Friends of Education recognition and reception. I see one in our audience today from Pickney. We are a better school system because of the many volunteers and parents and grandparents and community partners who take the time to come and lend of their services and supports to our buildings. Lawrence Public Schools will join as a co-sponsor with the Robert J. Doyle Institute of Politics honoring Temple Grandin with the 2019 Doyle Leadership Prize. Dr. Grandin is an advocate for individuals with autism and a professor of animal science. If you're a special education teacher, you know a lot about Temple Grandin, or if you took a special education course, you know a lot about Temple Grandin. So she will be here in Lawrence. Dr. Grandin is an advocate for individuals with autism. She will accept the award at a free public program at 7:00 PM on December the 11th at the Doyle Institute. If you didn't get a chance to read Lauren Fox's story in the Lawrence Journal World, I would encourage you to read it. It tells of a Lawrence High School alumni who was inspired by her history teacher Valerie Schrock to donate bone marrow as part of LHS's Be the Match Drive. She's now a KU sophomore, Kenton family. She will meet this 11-year-old girl whose life she saved during, I think they're going to meet in December. This story is just a true reminder of the many things that our teachers do, but how our teachers inspire greatness in our students, and our students have the power to change the world. Because our staff have been working so diligently this semester, we are giving them Wednesday through Friday off. This is just for Lawrence Public Schools. Now, we'll be off Wednesday through Friday. Our district offices will close at 3:30 on Wednesday for the remainder of the week. Definitely wish the board, all of our staff, and students, and school families an enjoyable fall break. And for those who celebrate the national holiday, a Happy Thanksgiving. That's all I, I will end with, I was reminded at our Friends of Education reception on last week, and I shared this at the LEA mixer as well, and I will share it with everyone in attendance here tonight. The parents of a New York elementary student really just kind of shocked me when I was visiting the school maybe a month or so ago, was eating, was doing a breakfast, as a matter of fact, we were eating breakfast, and she came up to me, she's in the second grade, and she came up to me and said, she knew who I was and my role, and she said, "What do you do on a daily basis that impacts my life?" Second grader, "What do you do on a daily basis that impacts my life?" And so I would encourage you, whether you're a parent or a staff member, to really think about that. Because I had to think about it, it really caught me off guard. What do we do on a daily basis that impacts our children, our students' lives? And that's, that probably goes back to our why, why we do what we do. And so with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. At this time, we'll have patron commentary. Do we have any more? Just a tip? Okay. At this time, I would like to call Jenny Skilman up. I'm going to read the audience participation as you come up. The USD 497 Board of Education welcomes patron comments and thanks you for taking the time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. This is your time to share your opinions, however complaints about specific staff or students will be heard by the board in executive session in order to protect the privacy of the individuals to be discussed. While you are not required to share your contact information, we ask for that information so district staff or the board can follow up with any specific concerns you may have. Please try to limit your comments to five minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Is this, can you hear me? This is weird. Yeller up there. My name is Jenny Skilman. I'm a parent of students at Free State and LMCMS, and I wasn't going to talk tonight because I thought Ron would answer a lot of things for me, but usually I email you later, but I'm going to save you that trouble. And I do really appreciate the many things discussed in the Safety Forum this evening that our district is pursuing, especially student connections and emotional health. That's really, really great. On September 24th, as you all are very well aware, our middle school experienced the lockdown that was referred to at a board meeting as one that couldn't have been designed any better to show every potential failure and inadequacy that needed to be addressed. Within 72 hours of that, Dr. Lewis had emailed a list of initial action steps that the district was going to take in the areas of training, communication, and equipment and technology updates. Here we are, nine weeks later, and while I got a sense that there's quite a lot of works in progress based on Ron's presentation earlier, I'm hard pressed to actually check off much of anything on the long list that is entirely completed. The very top of the list, as it should have been, was to ensure all employees are trained in crisis procedures. We have been informed that additional Alice training at LMCMS will be on December 11th, 11 weeks since the lockdown. I suppose the scripts for what is to be said on an intercom could have been shared with building administrators, as Ron referenced, at LMCMS, and I hope that they were shared across the whole district. But the teachers and students at my child's school have not been informed what this new playing language is specifically and how its use will differ from what happened in September. In a related timeline, 21 months ago, 17 students were shot and killed at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. A few weeks after that, at Central Site Council meeting in March 28, our school board liaison talked about a texting system that the district was exploring to dramatically improve communications in a crisis situation. Rationally, I understand that the probability of these incidents is very low. I also understand that when it comes to our kids and our schools, we are often more emotional than rational. That said, we didn't even have an actual shooter or even a weapon in our middle school this fall. An extensive emotional damage was done due to poor protocol. Follow-up, it apparently takes five weeks to get a broken window repaired after persistent parent advocacy, almost three months to schedule additional Alice training, and we are going on two years to launch a better communication system that seems to rely heavily on texting-like technology. I implore the district to please pick up the pace, especially on things that shouldn't be so difficult and bureaucracy laden. And I ask the board to please ensure accountability on these things, set deadlines, and ensure that they are met. We've been told many times over the years at Central that the building is old, the systems need updating, and then we wait. Remember the odd broken-down dishwasher in the science classroom that I told you about last November? As an odd example of neglect at our school, I think I sent a picture even? It's still there. Please don't let safety protocol fall to the same fate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. This time, we'll have Topher Enning from Pickney Elementary.
Hello, all. It's been an interesting thing, every time after I talk, I kind of reflect on what I said, and I have this Every time after I talk, I kinda reflect on what I said, and I have this idea of what I'm gonna, you know, oh, the next time, I'm gonna clear that up, and the next time, I'm gonna clear that up. It evolves in an interesting way. I like to speak in metaphor, but often they are about current events. To remind you, last time I was here, my six-year-old daughter spoke of her cousin experiencing bullying, her parents witnessing, her shutting down, having to pull her out, put her in a private school. My daughter made sure you know that in our family, we believe that the teacher who authorizes the bullying should leave and not the students being bullied. And that was, that was the tale, though, is that there was an authorizing of behavior that impacted students negatively, and it was too difficult sometimes for the culture that exists. I wonder sometimes if we don't get defensive, because we, like, we do so much for these kids, it seems hard to believe that we aren't doing enough. And sometimes that defensiveness gets in the way of us moving forward. So I had all these thoughts about, like, oh, I'm gonna come and talk about how do we move forward, how do we keep doing these things? And then the Friday following the sharing of that story, we got news that a 10-year-old fifth grader at my niece's former elementary school committed suicide, and her family cited bullying. They were an immigrant family, in all likelihood, like, literally didn't have the language to express what their child was going through to advocate for them. But there was a culture of allowance, right? Oftentimes with big things, it's bureaucracy, it's big things, they're hard to steer, it takes a lot of effort, we have to make small changes, small turns, we get defensive, we don't do enough. But we did as much as we could, right? You know, these issues affect all of us. We need to be able to lean into the difficulty of seeing that we didn't do what was right, not because we did wrong, but because we couldn't know what was right. So in my fashion, I will now attempt to share with you the metaphor of a man who didn't look to his failings, but looked to his calling. And that's what I'm asking all of you to do. Oh, I'm about to talk about my relationship in a public education setting. "You will be the rock of my church," Christ said to Peter. For Peter was strong enough, he could support the church's growth. Standing next to the Savior, Peter's mere glance was enough to silence an naysayer so the Lord could preach unrebuffed. So imagine Peter's shock when the Lord did also say, "You will deny me three times by the end of the day." "Never," said Peter, "would I run and not fight." Yet his last glimpse of the Savior was over the shoulder in flight. Imagine being Peter, sitting at home when he was sent to be told he had risen, or standing in that empty tomb, holding burial wraps of linen. Easy to see why Peter might think he could never repent for the sin of abandoning the Savior he had sent. But the lesson he teaches to me seems quite clear: Your response is important, not reactions of fear. The reaction is often instinct, something we can't control, but response is our practice, how we are able to mold ourselves into the being he knows we can be. For he gives us not what we deserve for our sins of the past, but a kingdom of heaven that will forever last, and that's what he gave Peter, not for how he'd react, but for his daily faith, how he chose to act. His response was to spread the good news, Christ's gospel. From a shameful reaction to response, Peter did well, not judging himself unworthy, and therefore, he was able to spread the word of salvation, though it brought him his death. And even in death, Peter continued his response, refused to die like the Savior, he hung upside down on the cross. And that's what made Peter the rock on which the church was built, not for reactions of fear, but a response of will.
At this time, we'll have board commentary. Dr. Shannon?
I have a very brief comment, if you wanna point this. Yeah, very brief comment. I'm really happy to be here. I mean, this feels weird, and looking down on the speaker feels really weird, but it's really, I'm really pleased that we're out in the community and actually, you know, having our meetings in various places. It's the first time we've done it, certainly in my time on the board, which is now almost eight and a half years. And so, you know, I hope we'll continue to do this, 'cause I think this is a really great venue. Although, next time, maybe sit us down there.
I found my notes. Okay. I wanted to just share a couple of, a few things. First of all, to say thank you to Brandon Daly at Woodland for inviting me to read to his fifth-grade class and for welcoming me and my daughter the morning that we came to read to his class and sharing in their morning meeting. It was a lot of fun, and we felt very much a part of their classroom family. On November 14th, right after our last board meeting, I had my November meeting of Governor Kelly's Tax Reform Council. We heard public testimony from groups from across the state and also a number of individuals. There was a lot of discussion amongst the commentators about corporate tax policy, itemized deduction policy in Kansas, and the food sales tax was a large topic of discussion. And actually, we had quite, quite a nice showing from Lawrence out of the set of commentators, so I was proud of my community. We also heard an update on the consensus revenue estimates for the state, which have, we have a more positive revenue forecast over the next couple of years, which is good news for the state in general, good news for public schools. Couple of the factors that we also discussed as continued struggles are the rate of outmigration of residents from the state of Kansas and also continuing tight labor market in Kansas. So that was just a brief synopsis of our day. The day after that, I had the pleasure to present as part of the panel at the KASB Kansas Association of School Board School Finance Workshop, along with the chairs of the Tax Council, Senators Lee and Morris. We talked about what the Tax Council is doing and how it relates to work of public education and why it's important. So that was, it was really nice to get to share that with a number of school leaders from across the state. November 18th, we had a policy committee meeting, Kelly and I did. We worked on some things to prepare for this evening and also looking at some of our, some additional policies, we have some updates that we need to be getting to as well from KASB. We had a board lunch at Prairie Park on November 19th. That was a lot of fun. We got to hear from student leaders at the building about their chess club and their garden club, and really enjoyed getting to hear from students about the things that they enjoy in their leadership roles in their building. And then finally, last, late last week, I volunteered at Reality U, which is an experience that we provided for Liberty Memorial and Billy Mills Middle School students at the College and Career Center, where they are given a employment profile, a family profile, and a budget, and they have to go out to different, different parts of the event and acquire housing, and acquire food, and acquire transportation, and plan, you know, what their life looks like, given their, the circumstances that are part of their profile. And it was really fun and interesting to help the students with that exercise, so I appreciate having that opportunity. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Jessica?
I was not here at the last meeting. I was out of town, so I wanted to take an opportunity to congratulate those people that were elected to the school board. Yay, not me, it's you. But with that in mind, I am also at the, on the, on the end of my term, and so I wanna go ahead and address Jenny's comments. Thank you, first of all, for saying them. I was your board liaison who talked about the text messaging. That is something we've been talking about a long time. It has been really slow, and I am, I share your frustration in the speed in which we've been able to get that going. I think that your request that there are some, some due dates and some more information that would be shared out to the teachers in the building, in particular, the staff, is more than reasonable, and so I would like to suggest that that is something that we get our staff working on to make happen. Topher, thank you for coming and sharing your, your poetry with us and your thoughts and your passion with us. I appreciate it. I think that's all I had to say, other than, Jenny, just really and truly thank you for the years I have worked on this board and been able to work with you. You are such a strong advocate for Liberty Memorial. They would be in a totally different situation without you at the helm of that Site Council all these years. So thank you for all that you've done for our district without any real recognition.
Thank you. Kelly?
I just wanted to update that I attended the negotiations meeting with GR a week or so ago, and I continue to be really grateful that we have changed to this new model and the dedication of the LEA members and the district staff who are pulling together to resolve issues in a way that just feels more like the way that I want us to model for our students in terms of a parallel process. We're focusing a lot on conversations right now around redesign and specials and a few other topics that are coming up, and I look forward to the continued conversation and serving on the negotiations team. Shannon updated on policy, so I'll skip that. I also attended the budget meeting with Melissa, and we are beginning to look at how the resources we allocate to buildings have an impact on student outcomes, and I really appreciated the data that was presented and the way that that budget committee is framing issues. It's very helpful to me as a board member, and it gives me a lot to think about when I'm making decisions, so thank you. I appreciate the work. Melissa and I met on Saturday at Lady Bird Diner to discuss the onboarding of new board members, and I'm excited for the orientations that we have planned. I think they're going to be quite fun. I was able to ask, just as an example, GR if he would be Paula Smith's board buddy. Paula was here a few minutes ago, but I think she stepped out. So he agreed. Hopefully Paula is in agreement as well. I mean, it's really...
Is there a version of asking? Is there a version of asking?
Yeah. This is an ongoing conversation between GR and I, whether I'm asking or volunteering. So I appreciated that time that we had together on Saturday, and we're looking forward to, hopefully, having a time where we can get together socially with the board members that are going out and the new board members that are coming in. And then finally, I wanted to reflect a bit on the safety presentation that was presented to the board and from Ron and Dr. Lewis. I really appreciate how thoughtful you all have been in that presentation, your dedication to school safety and to our students. I particularly appreciate your continued commitment to relationship building and to targeting the work that we do in a way that supports the social-emotional well-being of our students. All of the, not all of it, but a lot of the data coming out right now suggests that that's the way that we should be directing as a, as a district, so certainly the Secret Service report is helpful in that way. One thing that was in that Secret Service report that wasn't mentioned tonight is that there is a correlation between suspensions and the threat risk for students. So we see that when we utilize in-school and out-school suspensions, there are consequences that are larger than just those that I have been beating the drum about for the last couple of years. So just wanna keep that in mind and draw attention to that. Finally, in April this year, the Lawrence Journal World wrote an editorial about myself and another board member, which they titled "Don't Let Political Agendias Muddy School Security Efforts." And in response to that, I haven't really said anything in response to it because it struck me as silly, no offense to the, well, maybe perhaps, to the Lawrence Journal World. But the premise of the editorial was that I utilize political philosophy to make decisions around school safety. So how I vote is informed by my, my political position. And nothing could be further than the truth. I haven't really spent a whole lot of time thinking about the article until tonight. My guiding principle in all of my decision-making on the board is really around the social-emotional well-being of our students. It's my professional grounding, relationship building has been part of my professional life for 20-plus years, and it continues to be. And as we talk about late school, late start time tonight, it will be part of that decision-making. It will be, inform every decision I make related to safety, and really every vote that I cast. I am framing it in that lens. So I just wanted to qualify that this evening, so I appreciate the opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Kelly? Anyone else? Okay. At this time, we will look at old, is, no, old business with the review and possible adoption of our board policy. Oh, so sorry. I am jumping ahead. Oh.
She said you consent first. Okay. So I'm sorry, are you saying this? Okay. This evening, Jessica is whispering in my ear to make sure that I do the retirements. So in recognition of retirements tonight, the board would like to thank Larry Hogsett for his service, 23 years of devotion to this community and its schools. We appreciate your service and hope you enjoy your retirement.
At this time, we will have... Get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the Board of Education adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
So, okay.
Mason?
Yes.
Fincher?
Yes.
Gordon Rock?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Elise. Now, we will have a final review of our, and possible adoption of our board policy, JCDB, also known as the dress code policy. And we have board members Shannon and Kelly to kind of report out.
Sure. May I jump in? Yeah. Shannon and I made an edit to the policy as recommended by a comment that we had gotten from a past board member, and I am having trouble pulling up the policy. It included gender expression.
Thank you. Early paragraphs in the policy, we talked about a number of areas in which we might make sure that our dress code policy is not modularized to each of the groups. Then that description, description... Descriptive language, I'm sorry. As we talked about in our last board meeting, we added gender expression to that list when we had our policy meeting last Monday and reviewed the feedback that we had received since our first reading of the policy.
So that's the edit. The other thing I wanted to acknowledge is that we had a really helpful email from a teacher at Billy Mills Middle School that reminded us that the hats can become a game in a middle school classroom, and that tipping them off can be distracting from instruction. So that comment made us think about the hats inclusion in the dress code in, in a way that we hadn't previously. There was feedback to us related to safety and hats. So we had pointed out that, in fact, the policy does allow room for administrators to request that, that students remove a hat if it's obscuring their face. All of that's to say that we didn't make an edit to the policy or any change to the policy related to hats or hoodies, but we are making a commitment to the administrators who had concerns about that particular component of the dress code and really all the components of the dress code, that we will review the policy in a year, seek your feedback, and make amendments as needed. That's a normal process of the policy committee. We review policies on a relatively routine basis, but specifically, we're committing to reviewing this in a year to see how the implementation went. Is there something that was missing? Do we need to make changes? Other than that, and a couple, you know, a couple nice emails from women saying that they were going to frame the policy, I'm excited that we are, I think, on the verge of voting to approve.
I'm going to say that this is probably the first time in my eight years on the board that I have ever received emails from students in support of a board policy change, and I was very excited to receive those emails because it tells me that students see what we are trying to do as, as the right approach, and it was, it was really nice to see that. There was also a very nice letter to the editor in the Journal World in support of the policy. I don't know if other board members saw that. So I am, I'm excited that we're moving this forward, that we are replacing a hodgepodge of policies at our six secondary buildings with a unified policy that will be... at our six secondary buildings with a unified policy that will be more consistently and coherently applied and set a different tone that's more supportive of our students and hopefully, actually easier for our staff in the end. So I'm excited about this change.
Comment from our student board member?
Hello. Again, I'm Sabrina Castle. I'm a senior here at Free State this year. I don't have any critique necessarily to the new dress code. In fact, it's only praise, but I just wanted to let the board know how much I appreciate the change because before, at Free State, everyone can attest to this, there was kind of a inconsistency when it came to the dress code, as in, most teachers would kind of let students wear whatever they want because they didn't really care, but there were some teachers that were very adamant about enforcing it. And that would leave a lot of students kind of confused, wondering whether they would be getting in trouble for whatever they're wearing. And I had a personal experience with this. I had not been dress coded for years at Free State. I had never seen really any of my friends be dress coded or anything. And I had an incident where a teacher called me out publicly twice for what I was wearing. And while it's understandable that a teacher is enforcing whatever dress code you guys have because that's their job, I want to make it known that I really appreciate you guys putting that the manner should be handled privately because, as a young girl, that was completely humiliating to be called out in front of my entire class for what I was wearing. It's just very degrading, really, and it felt like I was being judged by someone who I trusted to give me an education. It was kind of scarring, honestly. So, yeah, and there's, in our generation, there's kind of a body positivity movement happening, as you could say. And I like this dress code because it acknowledges self-expression for us. Like, I feel like the mood towards women's clothes, I mean, okay, I'm talking about women's clothes specifically because most dress codes in the past, including our dress code, were extremely geared towards girls specifically. If you looked, there would be like 10 things that girls couldn't wear and maybe one thing that guys couldn't wear for consistency purposes. And so I love this dress code because it acknowledges what we wear as like self-expression and whatever makes us happy as opposed to like girls wearing stuff to get attention and stuff like that because that's just not, that's not what I'm about personally, and I know that's not what a lot of girls are trying to do with what they wear. So, yeah, it's just really comforting not to have to worry. I mean, I have to worry a little bit, obviously. I'm not going to wear like spikes to school or anything, but, you know, if I want to wear a certain like cute crop top or something, I don't have to think about at home like, oh, am I going to be sent home for this? Am I going to be called out in the middle of class? Because that can be really distracting to an education. I know a couple of girls that have been sent home for what they're wearing, and obviously, that's time out of class that you're missing. And, yeah, I just feel like this is a really effective, good thing. Yeah, so that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
I just want to make one comment because, again, I was not here for the first reading, but I wanted to thank both Kelly and Shannon for their work on this. I'm really proud of it. I think that it's a fantastic edit to our previous dress code. I particularly love the line that staff need to mind their own distractions. I think that's incredibly important in the world that we live in today. So thank you both for putting this forward, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Dave, quick clarifying question. I know that our student board member does not have voting rights, but can they make the motion? Okay. Would have been nice. So can I add a motion to?
Policy Committee's recommended changes to board policy, JCDB, as revised based upon the board discussion on November 11, 2019, with an effective date of November 25, 2019.
Second.
Gordon-Rock?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Excuse me. At this time, we'll have Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Deputy Superintendent, and Rick Henry, Director of Secondary Support, to come up and give us a report on the high school start time. This is our first report.
Good evening. Is this on? Sorry. Okay. Good evening. I'm going to stay up here. I'm not going to go down there like Dr. Lewis just because I may need some assistance. I'm sorry. Oh, it's up to you. The computer is just here. I'm sorry, I should have come up here sooner. I am looking for the presentation. Good evening. As Melissa shared with you, I'm Anna Stubblefield, Deputy Superintendent, and Rick Henry is way over there. He is the Executive Director of our secondary schools. The purpose of tonight's report is to respond to the research that has demonstrated that students who receive more sleep or healthier and more successful in and out of school. And this particular report ties to two of our board goals, and they're highlighted. They're student-centered learning and safe and supportive schools. On, in January, our board received a report from our, in our advisory committee, that took a year to study the impact of starting high school later at either 8:30 or 9 o'clock. From that report, our board charged us to come back with an implementation plan for the 2021 school year. So I'm just going to provide a brief history for those of you who may, this may be your first time hearing this information. This conversation originally started in 2015-16. The first committee to take a look at this was comprised of high school building administrators and district administrators, and I believe they were looking at moving the start time to 8:30. At that time, when they came back, they shared what the challenges would be to implement it as well as the cost associated with it. And that time, the board, the current board, didn't make a motion or ask the district to move forward with implementation. During the 2018-19 school year, a late start study committee was put together, and this time, it included district administration, building administration, teachers, as well as parents and community members. And we also had several focus groups that both included students, parents, and community members. After that report, that particular committee affirmed what the research said, that students who get more sleep are healthier and have more success in school. And after that report, the board made the motion for us to come back with the plan for implementation in the 19-20 school year, and they also asked us, for the committee at that time, to consist of district administration, building administration, and staff at both high schools. This committee has been meeting since January. Rick Henry has been leading those committees, and during the previous committee, we did several surveys, focus groups, and we used Patron Insight, which is an outside organization, to compile all of the data. And from that data, one of the things that we gleaned was if high school start time was going to move back to a later time, there may be more students who are interested in a zero hour. So Rick is going to start with that survey information as we talk about what the committee's implementation plan was.
And before I begin, I'd like to apologize for the coughing that you might hear coming from me. I've got the crud that seems to be going around. The committee determined that we needed a little bit of information, some information might be helpful in making a decision. This first question tried to get at the percentage of students who felt like they would enroll in zero hour if the regular class period or regular school day began at 8:30. As you can see, there were, we surveyed 8th through 11th grade. 8th graders will be incoming 9th graders, and 12th graders this year won't be in school next year, so those were not considered in this survey. You'll also notice the numbers of respondents at the bottom of the slide. 8th grade had 531, 9th 330, 10th 377, and 11th 380. Those are, the 8th grade represents all four middle schools combined, and the 9th, 10th, and 11th grade represent a combination of Free State and Lawrence High students. The next slide asks which, asks students if they would enroll in zero hour if the school day, the regular school day, began at 9:00 a.m. And so there are the percentages for that question. The committee also thought it might be important to know if students do opt to take a zero hour, if they would need to have bus transportation provided. And I thought this totally made sense to me because you'll see, the younger the student, the more likely they would need bus transportation. And finally, the committee wanted to know the percentage of students who plan to participate in athletics or activities, not including school clubs or organizations while in high school, but the athletics and activities that would typically involve either after-school practice and/or missing school time, missing instructional time for events and competitions. I forgot to say before, that survey was conducted this fall, early in the fall. This teacher survey was conducted last spring, and we just wanted to get a feel for percentages of teachers. First of all, the first question was just basically asking if teachers would be willing to teach a zero hour that starts at 7:30, which would be the 8:30 start time. The second question was trying to get at teachers' willingness to teach a zero hour if first hour began at 9:00 a.m. So you can see the percentages there. Eighty-five responses includes a combination of Lawrence High and Free State.
With that information, we wanted to also provide to the board what the cost would be depending on which avenue the board wanted to pursue. I will say, the costs, all of these are estimates, and if you go back and compare them to the cost that we shared in January, there are changes. First student shared with us that the changes that have come about were due to inflation for the savings. And the other component in addition to inflation is, one of the things that would happen if you moved to a 9 o'clock start time, you would have fewer buses than the entire fleet. So in order to, we all have a list of considerations that we talk about in a second. In order to try to minimize the amount of time that students who participate in athletics and activities would have to be out of school, I asked them to include three buses in the fleet on a lower, at the 9 o'clock time, and so the savings was reduced because of that, because that was one of the considerations that we heard from both parent, students, and staff around the amount of time that students would potentially have to miss from school if we pushed our start time back because we are a part of the Sunflower League? Is that right? Okay. And all of the schools in that, in our league, get out like anywhere between 2:50 and 3 o'clock. So if you remove buses from the fleet because you wouldn't need as many buses, because you would be able to reuse buses from the 8 o'clock start time from elementary and middle schools, you could potentially have students having to leave school at 1 o'clock or whatever, just depending on the competition. So we asked them to keep three buses in the fleet. So that's why that approximate savings is decreased. Also, I would, we put it as savings because that's what it is, but I really wouldn't count it as savings. I would count it as, as we talk about our considerations, some of the money to cover some of the unforeseen costs that we will share around in our considerations. So if the board were to select providing buses for zero hour, students like, because we believe there will be an increase in zero hour if it's at 8 o'clock. Currently, about, how many, what percentage of students are enrolled in zero hour, Rick? Eighteen?
Twelve.
Twelve percent of our students are enrolled in zero hour. There is a difference between Lawrence High and Free State just because of the number of offerings. I know we talked with Lawrence High, regardless of what decision is made here, about possibly increasing the options for students at zero hour, so that may impact that. And according to Zach, based, Zach is our Data and Assessment Executive Director, we, based off the number of students who indicated, who actually took the survey, who indicated that they would possibly enroll in a zero hour, we can, we would probably potentially see about an 8% increase. So if the board decided they wanted to provide two tiers of buses, it would actually be a cost, but if we still rely on students to get their own transportation, it's a potential savings of about $110,000. But First Student was really clear on these are estimates, and until we actually work through it, we wouldn't know the exact number. So some of the considerations, we talked a little bit about the transportation savings of 9 o'clock. It would reduce the number of buses, but we did address that by asking First Student to leave three buses in the fleet. And I already said, all of them were estimates, and there may be some unforeseen costs that we wouldn't know until we would actually do it. So one of the things, because I don't want to look like I'm not supportive, I am really presenting this neutrally, we really wanted to present the considerations that administration would have to navigate through. We talked in the last report about all the positives, and we know the positives, but these are actual considerations that came from the committee and administration that we would have to navigate through if we pushed it back. So I just want to be clear on that. One, we would need, we can do it with the same level of FTE that we have in both high schools. I talked to the high school principals about that. The only thing that, a few things that would impact staff is that, right now, our teachers who teach zero hour is kind of like, yeah, I'll teach zero hour because I prefer that. We, that, we probably would have to say, we need X number of teachers to teach zero hour, and it may not be everyone's preferences. And we recognize that we would, we would do something like, say, do the survey, see who it is, but there may be some course offerings that a teacher may not necessarily want to teach on the 8 o'clock tier or the 9 o'clock tier. We would have to say, as long as we are staying within the master agreement of the number of hours and periods, we would probably have to say to some teachers, we need you to teach from this time to this time. And that is not something that we would have to negotiate, it's just something that we would try to navigate. It's just something that we would try to navigate and actually give teachers as much preference as possible. But that's a reality, and that's something that board and administration may hear from teachers. We also know that there's a potential increased cost for support staff. I'm talking office staff, security, because if you have more kids who are enrolled in a zero hour, you just may have to staff differently. Right now, Free State has over three hundred students in zero hour, so they navigate that. So we would just see what they're doing with that and see how to replicate that. But we don't know until we would actually do the enrollment of the students to see how many students may potentially choose to take a zero hour. To keep after-school activities the same, one of the things that the committee talked about was, what if we said, all students who participate in athletics and events will be forced to take a zero hour? That, if that, something like that were done, then you would reduce the amount of time that they were actually missing from academic classes. But that would also mean that the coaches, any coaches that teach would also have to teach on the zero hour, and that may reduce the number of course offerings at seven period, which means we would then maybe have to see if we can mutually agree with some teachers to buy a planned time or piecemeal and hire part-time staff. That's only if that was something that we would come to an agreement on. It's something that came up, so we just wanted to share it. A later start time will cause students who participate in certain activities to miss more instructional time. That's just something to consider, and how do we provide the support and to make sure that those students with that misinstructional time are not missing on key, missing out on key concepts and such. Students who work after school may be impacted. That was just something that students had shared with staff, and staff brought it up in this, in this committee again. And students who provide care for younger siblings now would be getting out after their siblings. Those are just things that we would be aware of and have to navigate with students and families. Another thing for the board to consider, and Myron is here, and Myron, if I misspeak, you can come correct me on the microphone. During, Free State, at the time when this was made our charge, we didn't have any schools under redesign. Free State is under redesign, and at one of their meetings, at the last meeting I was at, one of their what-ifs, they haven't worked out any details. I don't even know if it'll go forward. This is all teacher-driven, so if the teachers decided that this was something that they wanted to address, but it did come up multiple times, and I just wanted to share it in this space, that through redesign, they could potentially come up with a more flexible schedule or an option to acquire minutes online. And they are exploring flexible scheduling. They are talking about lots of different opportunities. I don't know that may come out of that. But if it did, they could talk about what a nine to three oh five day would look like with students acquiring some, the additional minutes online. The challenge with that, one, first, they would actually have to come to something that would incorporate this. We couldn't charge them to do this. I will just say, proactively, they are thinking creatively like that. Two, their presentation doesn't go to the state board or KSDE until May. So we would not know, we would know along the way if they're planning this, but it has to be approved. So if it's not approved, then it would not be addressed. And, yeah, those are the two main things. It would have to be from the teachers and approved in May. So before we move to questions, I guess, we didn't have a motion for the board because I, we were just looking for direction from the board. Do we move forward with an eight-thirty implementation or a nine o'clock implementation? Or what, can it be done? Yes. Do we know the considerations and things that we have to navigate to through? Absolutely. We wouldn't know what the schedule looked like until the students actually enroll. They enroll in February, January, February? Myron? February? So there, during that time, we would then actually know who wasn't enrolling in zero hour. I will say, the students took the surveys. I don't know if they discussed it with their parents about who needs transportation, who would do a zero hour, so all of that could potentially change. So that, we wouldn't have the actual, how much we have to tier and do different things until they enrolled. So questions or directions? Or else? Anyone? Rick?
Ask it, then I'll.
Oh, okay.
No, that's, that's okay. It's probably not a surprise that I would speak to this. So we've been discussing this off and on since 2015. My perception is that we keep kicking the can down the road. Certainly, there are, you know, considerations in terms of if school goes later. I want to go back to the recommendation from the High School Start Time Advisory Committee. So they affirm the benefits of a later start time. Recognizing the community is calling for a array of options to meet their needs, we recommend a committee continues to meet, starting now, to look at broader issues, including but not limited to a staggered start time, redesign, a later start time, but not a later any time, and an extended school year seminar with implementation in August 2020. So they threw out possibilities, and I think there are a lot of possibilities for how you can mitigate some of those things. I would add, one, in terms of athletics, in your respective start time, I think we ought to do this anyway, with a lot of schools, if you are playing a sport, you enroll in PE credits. And so, you know, I mean, my, my school was about fifty years ago, so it was a while ago. That's what we did. A lot of schools do that. If you do that, you can do some things with athletics, like put that, the PE credits at the end of the school day, so that potentially frees up time. If you did seminar along with that, that could free up some time as well. So I think that, if you think about this from a problem-solving perspective, I think that there are things that you can do to mitigate these, these kinds of concerns. You know, and they're real concerns. You know, students will be enrolling in two to three months, if we're talking about February or March. And if, when we had the last, one of the last discussions we had around this topic, and I think that was around February, we decided that it was really too late to move forward with the start time because of the considerations that would need to be put into place. You know, I think we should do this tonight. And, you know, we're talking about potentially saving a hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, and with a nine o'clock start, we save money, we do things that are in kids' best interest. You know, you spend a little time on, on health and safety and social, emotional health. But if you go down the list and look at the research, it shows there's less depression and anxiety, there's better emotion regulation, there's a decrease in risky behavior, alcohol, marijuana, risky sexual activity. There's a whole variety of benefits that come from that, and that's the social, emotional. We also know from the research that when kids start later, not only do they get more sleep, that's been documented many, many times, but that there are academic benefits. So they, they do better in class. There's less tardism, there's less absenteeism. So there are a whole variety of benefits that come from making this move. So, you know, we've talked about this for a long time, but I think we need to move on this. And if we wait until December, January, February, then it's going to be too late again. I'll say probably one other thing, and then I maybe may shut up. You know, we did, you know, in terms of the challenges, we kind of did a test run of this last year. What we did was, because of the missed school days, we extended the school day. We changed the high school start times for about a month. And we gave people five days' notice. And I'm not saying the adjustments were easy for everybody, but, but people made the adjustment. If we do this tonight, we will be giving people eight months. We'll be giving the district eight months, the schools eight months to plan this, to put some of these other things into place. And, and we'll give parents and kids eight months' notice.
I would like some further discussion or clarification about how a decision on this impacts the redesign work that's going on at Free State. And I guess I would, along with that, I would ask the question of whether the committee that's been meeting talked about implementation of this at one high school, but not the other next year, given that the redesign work for Free State isn't going to be done until May. We just had a board meeting two weeks ago where we talked about redesign, and the board members who were there made a commitment to that redesign team that we were going to be supportive of their creative efforts and not place parameters on what they are doing or tell them that they can or can't do anything at this stage. And so I guess I would just like you to respond to that.
So as far as, as far as redesign. Sir, make an emotion to move it back. It's just the same parameters that they are operating now. Time, what they were more looking at are flexible options for students. So they weren't necessarily saying, you know, everybody started eight, everybody started nine. They were looking at, how can we give parents and students more choice and voice around when their student starts? So one of the things I heard them say, what if we, our building was open from, what was the time, Myron? Seven to five, or just what would that mean? So they were looking at more flexible options. So moving the start time back, if they come with a more flexible option, it just depends on what their flexible option looks like. One of the things that we have started to talk about a little bit in negotiations is depending on what comes out of redesign, if it is seen beneficial for one school that's going through redesign, and it makes it through the variance committee, if it's going to impact the master agreement, we would consider, like, doing it at other, in other spaces. One of the things we have to be, we didn't put up there as a consideration because we were thinking both campuses kind of doing the same thing, is we also have the College and Career Center, so we just, we would be mindful of that. And we would probably have to make sure that however the courses, whatever has been offered, we can support to make sure students can still access the College and Career Center around the schedules that are there. So that's something outside of this, that depending on where Free State falls, we're going to have to navigate between Lawrence High and the College and Career Center. And we're mindful of that on the front end, about some of those bigger structural components and starts and end times, and when we're offering courses that cross all three campuses. I don't know if that helped you or made it more confusing.
In the room tonight, who is leading that redesign effort for Free State? And what I'm really concerned about is making a vote tonight that will be perceived, whether it's meant to be perceived that way, whether it's meant that way or not, will be perceived as the board, yeah, basically stepping on their toes. Because I have, I have admitted at that meeting that I was not going to do that.
So our redesign team just met again today, and we were talking about this. I don't think they see this as a, as a real barrier, because there's so many other factors into flexible scheduling and design, that if it was, even if it was pushed back to nine o'clock, we would still offer a eight o'clock zero hour time or something like that. So the flexibility involved in that. So whatever the board decides on this, I don't think they'll take it as a, as a barrier to that, because they're still seeing as a, as a, there's a lot of possibilities. And I don't think the, the one start time there is, is going to be the barrier.
And then my next question for you, Anna, is have you had any preliminary conversations of where the cuts will come if, if it does in fact end up not being a savings but a cost to the district in terms of additional staff, et cetera, to implement this when it, when it all shakes out and students enroll? Where, because, you know, we're not getting enough money next year, new money next year to even cover probably our basic cost increase for things like insurance and, and basic growth. And so any money that we choose to spend is, means we're cutting somewhere else. So I guess I'd like some assurance that that's.
I honestly can't provide assurance. That's why I just said I wouldn't count it as a savings. I would count it as what is needed to offset some of those unforeseen costs. And Myron was at the last committee meeting, and if you shift the staff back and do zero hour, it will be the same like we do now, like, as far as scheduling-wise. We just don't know, like, the holes around, if, like, right now, Free State has three hundred, over three hundred students, and Lawrence High has thirty-nine. So Free State is making it work now, but let's say if they ended up having six hundred students taking zero hour, does that mean the attendance clerk or someone a couple of days a week has to stay a little later? And I don't, and that, those are the things we wouldn't know until we were actually working through it. So that, those are the things until we actually see. Because if you just shifted back and all stays, things stayed the same, the greatest challenge would be those student athletes and students in activities who would be missing more instructional time, because the staff would be the way that it is. So if you're just moving it back, we shouldn't have a increase in additional staff. We just may have some holes, which we know, because some of our students, you know, a seven o'clock zero hour sounds really eerie. Eight o'clock, not so much. So that's what we heard from students that, oh, I probably would take a zero hour at eight o'clock. But whether that actually happens, we won't know until they enroll, actually.
Data, you could read it a couple of ways. You could read that as, those students might have been likely to take it anyway, and it makes them even more likely. Or you could read it as, maybe they wouldn't have considered taking it at all, but now you have, you know, sixty-six out of a hundred students saying, yeah, I think I'll, I'll sign up for this, which is a way higher rate than what the twelve percent is. So the jump from twelve, twelve percent to sixty-six percent, I don't think that's actually what was an experience.
I think when you look at it, too, you have to look at the, the N number. It wasn't all of the students, it was like a portion of it. So that's why we really won't know until they actually enroll. Do I intuitively think there'll be more kids to take a zero hour? Yes. But will it be from twelve percent to sixty-one percent? I don't, honestly, I don't think so. Or fifty percent, like, will it double? Possibly, but I don't. Those are the things, like, if we know and students start to enroll, we can come back and say, everybody. and say, everybody's enrolling in zero hour or whatever. I don't think that would necessarily happen, but those are the things I don't feel comfortable like saying or giving predictions on because I don't know who actually would enroll.
Hello again. So, I think the biggest issue that could arise, we've been talking about it obviously, is the issue of activities going later. No one wants to be here at school until seven o'clock or whatever, for whatever they might be in, sports, things like that. And I know that in the past, we had a study hall period. I've heard rumblings of that. That was a while ago. And people, from what I've heard, it seemed to be very beneficial. And by study hall, I mean it would be kind of a free period. Probably students of different grades would be put into like a random class assigned to a teacher. It's a free period, or it was a free period where students could go talk to teachers or talk to, go wherever in the building that they needed to for whatever reason, miscellaneous stuff like that. And I think we could combine this kind of issue by, I don't know how exactly this would play into the number of hours that students are required to be educated in the day, but I think if we were to put, if we were to implement a later starting time, I mean, if we were to have a kind of free hour at the end of the day where non-athletes could have a seminar period or study hall period where they can go talk to teachers or whatever, and athletics would actually start during the school day. So, they would have at least, you know, however long class period is, what, 45 minutes, something, 55? Yeah. It would at least give them an extra hour so that it would at least feel like it would be keeping the same rate as it would be now. I think that would be interesting. Oh, yeah. And as long as I have the floor. I have heard from athletes, I'm not personally a student athlete, I used to be a cheerleader, but I'm not anymore, but I've heard from my friends that they think students who are involved in athletics, and this could be on a semester by semester basis, obviously you're not in sports all year if you don't partake in that. But if you're in a sport at that time, you wouldn't have to enroll in a gym class. I think we're required half a credit right now for our four years. Yeah, I honestly don't know how that would play out either, but I think that would be interesting because I know a lot of student athletes are overwhelmed by their workload because it's just kind of confusing right now because we have teachers telling us like, go get involved, go be in sports, go do clubs, but also do your homework and get to school on time. And that's a lot. So, I think that all those suggestions would at least help with that so that students can feel like they are encouraged to get involved instead of being pulled either way. So, yeah.
Specifically about, you know, kind of doing this before their construction's done? And if that, if that has even been discussed or if that is a concern at all in terms of just the level of stress to the staff and really the students making that change while they're still kind of in a construction zone?
Did it come, I think it did come up and Rick, I wasn't at every meeting this time, but Rick was, so he can...
Construction comes up a lot with every issue that we discuss. And I, I remember it being discussed a bit, but not, I wouldn't say discussed in depth or...
Do any of the administrators that are here have better information?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening to everyone and thank you so much for the question tonight. As Rick has just briefly stated, construction is in the opening sentence for every conversation that we have and everything that, or let me go back, every decision that we make right now until August of 2021 is centered around instruction. I do believe that there would be interest for additional possible, possible zero hour. Currently, we have two. We have our weight training and we have our student council that meets every single day. As I said, but construction, there, there is a lot of stress that is associated with construction and especially as we are closing out phase one, moving right now and preparing for phase two that will go into effect February 12th. Today in our construction meeting at 1:30, we're looking at all the areas and getting preparation for phase three. So, we're continuing to move forward. But one of the things that I feel that is so important about the LHS family is that we do what's best for students. So, if this is a, a decision that is best for students, we're going to find a way to get some things done.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
I just love Dr. Johnson so much that I think she's the first person ever to make me lose my questions. Hopefully it's never happened before. Anyway, thanks for staying another year. So, my question related to the school's start time is related to, if we started at, well, two things. One, that we received an email, the board received an email related to dress code where the student highlighted this important issue related to feeling like they had choice and freedom in their decision-making about what they were going to wear to school. This was an important thing to students and they wanted to have more choice. So, when we think about that in terms of, of school start times and the flexible start times, providing additional opportunities for them to have some flexibility in their schedules is one way to look at this problem and it's part, it's part of, been part of the conversation. The other part of the conversation is related to sleep and increasing opportunities for students to have more sleep. So, it's to me as a board member, there are, those are almost two competing, not necessarily competing, but they're two different benefits to the, to the student. And, and while I real, I, I'm motivated to support this in a way that I think it's a bold step that Lawrence can take to increase, you know, to, as it relates to some of the things that Rick highlighted. But additionally for me, I'm really beginning to center it around student choice and that flexible attendance that has been part of the conversation recently from the redesign committees, but also from district staff that I've been talking to. So, for me, I just wanted to frame it that way, that there are these two benefits I see in the way that it's being presented to us now. And I would like to see some disparities around the number of students at Free State who take zero hour and the number of students who feel zero hour is accessible to them at LHS to shift. That, something's happening there and that concerns me. So, for me, I don't, you know, I wouldn't want you to be challenged to a way, in a way that created more difficulty than benefit, but I am interested in considering pursuing this option.
My understanding when, when we had the LHS zero hour, like they have two classes and Free State has more than two options, was the availability? How often is that revisited? Like...
Margene, I'm looking at you because you have some history. If I misspeak, let me know. I, wasn't it, isn't it just because historically that's what's always been offered at LHS and it hasn't really, other courses have not really been explored? Or have they been explored?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margene Brokhammer, the Associate Principal at Lawrence High. Historically, every year we look at what the course requests are. And in the past, when we've looked at the number of students who have requested a zero hour, we would have students who might make a small section, but by the time they got into really living a zero hour and being at school at 7:00 AM every morning, we couldn't justify a class that ended up to be seven, seven or eight or even 10 students when we had, would have another section that another teacher would teach later in the day that would end up being close to 30 or even that. So, it was consistently looked at and in the midst of all the competing interests, the decision was made to look at teacher workload. And transportation is a different story. At Lawrence High, our student transportation is a different story. I believe that here, so transportation was a factor that was heavily weighed as well.
Maybe the difference in socioeconomic status, there were more students at Free State have a car accessible to them than students at LHS? Is that what you're referencing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
So, one of the other considerations, just budget-wise, it will, and it will be a little shift, not a great shift. Myron and Margene could tell me if I'm misspeaking. We would have to, if we're going to maximize our staff, there will be certain courses, if it, if we had an arbitrary number of, if it's not at least 12 students, we can't offer it. And that will be a little different than in some cases that we've even done during the regular day. So, we, budget-wise, we just need to start moving in that direction. So, that's something else that would come of this. And separate from this, we, budget-wise, we need to do that. I'm looking at Kathy. Yeah.
Okay, Rick, but I know that there's another student, since this is related to, there's another comment. But go ahead while Elena comes up.
So, a couple of points that I wanted to speak to, I'm sorry, at the end of the table, the student, Sabrina. So, I appreciated your comments about the, you know, the study hall, the kinds of things that people can do. You know, because I think there are things we can do if we thought creatively and in a problem-solving way that would mitigate some of those issues. I also think that there's potentially a great corollary benefit to doing that because, and I don't know what your perspective is, but I think you take too many classes. I think seven classes is way too many. I mean, I can't imagine going through my day, do this five-minute break, do this five-minute break, do this five-minute break. So, what's that? Yeah. So, to the extent that you can take your foot off the gas for some other things, build some break in there that benefits the after-school, the athletics part of this as well, I think that allows you an opportunity to do better in the other classes because you can devote time to them. So, I think there are some, some benefits to that that we, you know, we really haven't talked about. You know, my impression is going through these conversations since 2015, we're looking for the perfect time to implement this. There was never going to be a perfect time. You know, you just have to do it. I have confidence that the staff will figure out the way to mitigate those concerns. There are, excuse me, there are hundreds of schools who've made this change or in the process of making this change. In California, 40 million people, all of the high schools by 2020, 2023 will have converted to 8:30 or later. That's state law. So, that probably wasn't a perfect time for them. This is not the perfect time, but if we don't do it, we're never going to do it if we wait for the perfect time.
I go to Free State. I'm a senior, so I guess my opinion should just be taken with a grain of salt just because I'm, I'm leaving anyway. But honestly, I think the groups of people that you are going to disenfranchise by implementing this are going to be student athletes, people active in like debate and forensics, people who need to leave school soon, who are going to be missing more classes, which are honestly the students who we need to be encouraging more because these are the type of students who are bringing that excellence to the school, who are bringing the awards and therefore bringing money. If money is what we're afraid of, then, I don't know, why are we building learning stairs? We're so focused on making physical changes in our schools and like, oh, we get the kids more sleep, oh, we put like some big stairs in the school, we make it like happy-looking, we make the students happier. But honestly, if physical environment's not going to change anything, like where was that guy who came in? He was like talking about bullying and there was another girl who came in who was talking about like school shootings? What's going to happen to make these changes that we need is not, is not this reactive style. It's a, it's, it's starting with young kids. It's starting with the young kids, teaching them, having these conversations that no one really wants to have because they're young kids, they can't handle it. But like, kids are getting shot, like they're dying. These are conversations that we need to be having. And like, stuff like this is, this learning stairs, the new paint on the walls, the, the get more sleep, it's like patronizing because these are not issues that we need to be talking about, the bigger issues are these conversations that we need to be having. We're having kids drawing swastikas, swastikas, writing the N-word. This kid still goes to our school. I know I'm not supposed to be dragging names, but we, we know about this. And this is some, this is an issue we know about. And we all know about homophobia, transphobia, xenophobia around our school. And sleep is not going to fix that. And another group of people that we are disenfranchising by putting in this new timing situation where we start later are those who have to take care of their families, people whose parents aren't around, have like a single mother, single father, have to take care of their siblings and people who need to go to work. And I promise you, their jobs are not going to wait for them to get out of school, for them to come into work because they don't really care, they can just hire a new kid. We need, we need, we need flexibility. Yes, we need flexibility, but like that's what this year hour is providing right now. I have a job that I get to on time because of this zero hour. I get here early and it's, and I promise you, like getting more sleep is not going to make me happier. It's not going to make me like a better student, worried about marijuana and drinking. I promise you, more sleep is not going to change that. Your source says otherwise, but like, and we're so worried about like protecting the kids, but like, I'm the kids, Sabrina's the kids. Where are the kids in here? I don't, I promise you, like none of us knew this meeting was happening and this is an issue that a lot of us are passionate about, but we didn't hear anything about this. I drove Sabrina here, I'm her ride, that's the only reason I'm here. But like, I'm passionate about this and I want to talk about this. And I think that more kids need to be heard about this because right now, no offense, you're like grown and this isn't like concerning you directly. And if we're so worried about saving money, like, why the learning stairs? I'm so confused about the learning stairs. And do I have a five-minute like talking limit? I do. So, I should shut up.
So, so if, if I could respond, and I appreciate you, you're coming up here and, and disagreeing with us. You know, I couldn't disagree with you more though about the importance of sleep. So, there's lots of science that shows lots and lots of benefits to that. I'm not, I would not equate the learning stairs with getting adequate sleep.
Thing is, you put the time at nine, you put the time at 8:30, you do whatever, that does not impact like the people's nights before. Like, I know that if I have late arrival, like nine o'clock on Wednesdays, I will stay up to like three doing homework or like debate work. And I know that's true for all of my students, like all my like friends and peers, like everybody's going to stay up late regardless. And so, I, and nobody wants to stay here till four. Like, people love school, but like to an extent. And like, staying here till four is not going to make that efficacy that we are looking for amongst our students. The longer you stay here, like, the less fun you have. Like you said, we want to be here for as little time as possible and making us stay till four is not going to help that. And not to mention, we're broke and we need jobs. My job, I do not get to my job unless I have my zero hour. And I know that's true for a lot of students. And it's, it's something... And it's, it's something, it's something you're making a bigger deal out of than it actually is, not because, I'm not saying sleep's not important, yeah, I've seen like, we've all seen the Stanford Prison Experiment, you don't get sleep, you go crazy. Yeah, but like, that's not our biggest issue right now. I don't know why we're trying to pile on all these changes at once. I mean, it's good that we're acknowledging that our school has a problem, and that the whole USD 497 system has a problem, but these changes can, but these, these errors cannot be corrected by these, these small changes that we're making, because it's all physical stuff. And like, it's not the physical stuff that we're having problems with, it's the emotional stuff. Like, a lot of these students have emotional issues that, and like not to mention, if you pile on top of that, them having to stay till four, losing jobs, getting people who are active in like debate, active sports or whatever, having to lose more school time, like it's not going to help that. And if our main concern here is student mental health, then this is just, it's not helping, like it's not going to do any better. And like, I'm a student, you know, I, I know, I, I know. That's it.
Thank you for your passion.
Thank you very much.
Was there any, Shannon, did you have?
Well, I have a question.
Microphone.
With the
It's not on.
With the changes in the facility ongoing, if you were in a position where you've had more students who wanted to enroll in zero hour, does construction impact your ability to have access to an adequate number of classrooms to do that? Or is it really you're just shifting classroom use from later in the day to earlier in the day? I'm trying to, I'm trying to think about how, in the specific context of your building, what you've got going on, how, how that would work.
You know, that is a great question that I don't really have an answer to. I think Mr. Riles would be a great source, or Dr. Johnson, whichever, who has a better construction mind and capacity in handling those. So I think you get both of them.
Hello, I'm Quentin Riles, I'm Assistant Principal at Lawrence High School and Director of Facilities, and also work on our construction project as well. I don't think that it would be a problem as far as classroom space, we'd just be shifting to earlier or later, but if we have the classrooms, we have the space. And even if we don't have the space, we make it work and do what's best for our students.
And that's just part of what I was going to say. You know, we started here with very limited spacing, and we were able to, within the building, without going to other locations, to relocate 31 classrooms. So if, if space is an issue, we're able to address it within the building.
Can I have a suggestion perhaps to consider? I actually
Shannon, can you use?
Sure. I actually am moved by the student comment, and I would like to suggest a couple of things. One, I am not inclined to support the 8:30 move, given that it has a huge price tag and it's a very short amount of time. So if we were to narrow the focus on, at looking at a nine o'clock start time with a zero hour, could we take the opportunity to get some more focused student feedback on that specific proposal? Because I do think that it is important to have those voices. And I know Rick is bristling next to me because we have been talking about this for so long, and I reckon
Three, three different students are raised.
I recognize that, but I also, I do not want to dismiss the concerns, and I think those are valid concerns, and they actually are some of the concerns that I have had about doing this. I agree with the science, I agree that, that it says what it says, but I also think that the real-life impact on some of our students is, is an important thing to consider. So that would be my suggestion. If, if other board members would be supportive of that, I would be supportive of that. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things that we, and then Kelly, one of the things that I think you mentioned, Rick, was about the starch, the time that we had to push back start time, and it took like within five days, and that this will give them eight months. Not that we want to wait till the very last minute, but also, I feel like we can fairly give them, still, whether it's eight months, we can still give a decent amount of time within that, within, over the summer, to even make the adjustments that they, that we need. So again, if we're saying scholars first, I would like to not make a motion today.
Can you, can you talk about the students that responded? Because we do have, I agree that we certainly want to gather more student input, but I would say that we have gathered student input on three occasions, correct? Extensive surveys, and we've done focus groups, correct?
Yeah, and about 60%, and look, Rick may know the, off the top of his head, or not, it was over 60% of our students who said they were in favor of a later start time. But when we talked to our students, and you coupled, most of them wanted options and flexibility. So if, regardless of what we do, what was clear from our students consistently was, give me some choice and flexibility, and what that looks like, I think is what she just spoke so elegant about, like, I can come earlier so that I can get out and go to my job, I have flexibility, that, it was more around that. But about 60%, when you put it to them, parents and students said they agree with the research, and they, if there is a way to do it, to have a later start time, that.
And then, related to that, in terms of the data that we already have around students being, asking for a choice. So we have the voice of a student, and I think these are, the students I worry about the most in terms of the, not the most, but one of the groups of students I worry about with a later start time, when I'm considering board's decision related to this, to the, when, when school gets out, is student athletes and students that are involved in activities. However, when you look at the, the research, the, the group of students that are most likely to benefit from this particular move are students that are not involved in these, in, in, in the activities that have been cited. And I do think that there are creative ways that we can address meeting the needs of student athletes while still meeting, while still allowing the students that, that potentially could benefit most from late start time, the opportunity to participate in that, that schedule. So for me, the shift to providing students' choice is reflected both in the data, it's, that we've collected from the district, and is consistent with some of the direction that we've heard from redesign. So I don't know that I want to direct the administrators to go back and ask questions we've already asked. If there's additional information that we think we need to make a decision, I mean, I would want us to be very clear on what that is.
I think my suggestion, Kelly, was meant to be that if we narrow what we're talking about, if the board is in agreement, at least, on which of the options that have been discussed we would be leaning toward, and then even so much as putting it off until our December meeting and inviting students to come and provide feedback and participate, before we take a board vote, because I think that is
Yeah.
I was respecting the opportunity to make it known to students that we are really serious about doing this and giving them an opportunity to be heard.
I appreciate that perspective and agree with it. I can see that, it's different to me than
More surveys.
More surveys, yeah, thank you.
But work, work
So, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to hear from people. You can have a parade of people come in and say, I don't want to do this, and for me, that's not going to contradict the, the survey data we have from a lot of people who say they want to do this. We've had students come in, by the way, and present their own research about why we should move start times back. I do want to reiterate one thing, you know, we, we seem to be, some people seem to be moving ahead with this idea that, well, this is automatically going to lengthen the, the school year or the school day, and I don't think that's the case. I think there are things we can do to address that. But let me, you know, in terms of who benefits from this, you know, the American Academy of Pediatrics started this whole thing by saying, kids aren't getting an adequate amount of sleep, and they made the recommendation that school start at 8:30 or later. I think all kids benefit from that. And, and, I'm sorry, the research shows pretty overwhelmingly that, you know, if you link, if you start later, kids actually get more sleep. The most recent study, the Seattle study that came out in 2018, showed that, yes, kids stayed up on average 10 minutes later, they got up out of bed on average 44 minutes later. So that's a net of 34 minutes. But in terms of who this helps the most, let me quote something from one of the studies. "We found evidence that economically disadvantaged minority and low-performing students may benefit from later school start times. Relative to their equally disadvantaged peers, disadvantaged students attending schools with later start times had fewer absences, higher course grades, and higher Algebra I test scores. Additionally, we found that minority students are less likely to be suspended than low-performing students, and the low-performing students earn higher ACT scores in high schools that start later. These subgroup results suggest promise in narrowing gaps in school engagement and student achievement." So this helps everybody, but there's a particular set of kids that this is going to help more, if you believe the research.
And Elena, I wanted to kind of address, Elena did I pronounce this? Why you probably did not receive the survey is because the survey was geared towards eighth through 11th graders, so I, oh, okay, okay, okay.
To your question, Kelly, about whatever information we would need to make a vote, it would be, for me personally, I would very much like to make a vote not on estimated cost, which I know we can't have until after registration, but I don't know that I can vote for this on estimated.
So I, actually, I think that's a really good point. And I think we could, I do think that the board could direct to get more specific numbers, but we, if we, if we wait until, there isn't a way for you to get accurate numbers until, if we
Unless students actually enroll, and it's maybe double the number of students who are currently at, we know it can be done with 369, how many students are enrolled in Zero Hour at Free State now? We don't know unless 700 students enroll, what that's, what that means. So as far as numbers and the transportation costs, I, we typically see a certain percentage increase for inflation every year. So this is as good as it gets until actual enrollment and our actual contract for first student. Like, those numbers are not, we wouldn't come back with any additional information, honestly. The information, we could come back, some of the things that I heard from the different recommendations from Sabrina and others, like, we could say, what's the impact if there was a study hall? But if we change the number of, if we don't do something, if it's done within the master agreement, we don't necessarily have to negotiate it, as long as the teachers are teaching the six of seven, is how many they teach right now, and we count it in there, but if it's outside of that scope, it would have to go through negotiations. But we can talk about, like, what credits do we require, what does that do with staffing? Those are the kind of things that we could do a rough look at with the high school administrators, if that was, something like that was charged to us to look at, like, within the scope of the current language, what are our options? We can come back with something like that. Two weeks would be a quick turnaround, but we could at least start to look at what it would mean as far as changing language around graduation requirements, teaching course load, what course offerings and those kind of things.
I really appreciate that, that being asked to vote for something you don't know how much it's going to cost. Is that the critique?
Well, yeah, because, I mean, just as much as we've heard that people want this, we heard that people want to increase par salaries, I want to look at FNO staffing. I mean, the money has to come from somewhere, and for me, personally, par salaries ranks above this.
We'll say, if you don't pick 8:30 or the option to provide transportation to the zero hour, we know we are not starting with a cost. We are starting with a savings, but we don't know what the unforeseen cost, so you're not starting in the negative.
Unless you provide the transportation.
Yeah, we don't currently provide transportation.
We don't, what do you mean?
Correct, correct. No, we don't. Currently, we do not.
That seems an echo door.
I don't want to charge.
So could, could I? So, thank you. So I think, you know, the problem here is, we don't know what this is, how much we're going to save until we do this, and, but then we're being asked to make a decision before we have the information, but we can't get the information until we make the decision. So it's really pretty circular. So, you know, that's, that's one point. And again, we're talking about, and I have no interest in the 8:30. If you look at those numbers, I think nine o'clock, I mean, honestly, I would prefer 10 o'clock, but, you know, but we're not going to go there, I don't think, unless there's some appetite for that, I'm not seeing a lot of. So the, you know, so, so the nine o'clock, to me, makes sense. I think the question is, how much are we going to save? And right now, we see an estimate of about $110,000. Now, that may go down some, but in terms of actually making the decision about how much this saves, or if it does somehow wind up costing, that's something we're not going to know until February or March, when people start to do the enrollment. And at that point, if you're offering zero hour to students, they enroll for zero hour with the understanding that it's eight o'clock, and then the board says, no, we're not going to do that, you're back to seven, then you're creating a whole bunch of problems, which is one of the reasons I would like to move on this sooner rather than later, given the five-year time period we've been talking about this.
So would we definitely be able to offer zero hour at Lawrence High with multiple options if we start at nine o'clock and potentially provide busing and have that be relatively cost-neutral? I mean, that's really the question.
The busing will not be cost-neutral, it's $144,000.
But we've, they, we've, we've heard administration articulate that one of the reasons why enrollment in zero hour at Lawrence High is lower is because they are in more need of transportation.
Well, I'm just saying, that was the option that was up there, it's $144,000. So it, I'm, yeah, I'm just being clear that if you provide transportation
Can we get the data that that, to determine if that is in fact a factor at Lawrence High?
We can, Zach and the honors, we can split the data out by Lawrence High from Free State, from those who responded, to see what the difference was possibly, right, Zach? Yes, so we can get that data.
I think we should get that data before the next four days, so that
We have it, I mean, we can share.
Also, yes, if you have a question, this is, this is related to our report, so
But I, I mean, just
To follow up, I think that, for me, like, I'm not opposed to having a later start time, but what I don't want to do is have a later start time and basically end up in the same scenario we're in now, which is Free State has all these options for zero hour and Lawrence High doesn't. So all of the kids at Lawrence High who really don't want to start at nine, but want to start at eight, won't be able to. Like, that, to me, would be a really unfortunate circumstance that we could be creating.
But we create it right now. We have that, we have that scenario right now, where students at Free State High School get to take classes that LHS School get to take classes that LHS students don't get to take.
So if we're gonna change it, we need to change it, or we need to offer transportation now at eight o'clock for seven.
That's what I, but we have students that are making it to school at eight o'clock right now, all of them are. We don't have them making it at seven. So we know they can get there by eight. We know it, they do it every day.
Because we bus them.
But we do bus, we bus the students.
We, I mean, we try, but not the percent, not to the percentage that would offset the change that we've suggested. So it wouldn't be enough to say that the percentage of students that are bussed would account for the number of students that do not attend classes. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
And do we also, do we know that, or is that your speculation?
I would, I would agree that you, that I'm speculating, yeah. But that would be my guess, that we don't have 300 students on the bus not taking zero hour at LHS.
Yeah, I, okay, I see what you're saying.
No, it, it is speculation, but I think it's pretty well-grounded in that, you're right, kids make it at eight o'clock now, and they find a way to do that. I think that zero hour is gonna be a lot more attractive to people if it's, and honestly, I don't think anybody should take zero hour, but, you know, it's not my, not my choice. But I do think that if it's at eight o'clock, you're gonna have more interest in doing it, I think there's more likelihood that they're gonna get there. But, you know, this is all speculation. Ultimately, we won't know that until we have people signing up. And at that point, you know, we, it's either eight o'clock for them or back to seven o'clock if we don't do this.
I would like to have that information.
No, we have eighth and ninth, well, we have eighth grade also, but I, I like what Dr. Sabafield said about Zach.
I mean, we can split out the data and have it...
Splitting out the data.
Yeah, we, that, we definitely can split out the data that we have.
Okay. So, okay. Uh-huh. Do we have another? I thought we had another comment related to late start time? Do you have that, do you have your... No. It's coming up to speak.
Actually, I'm using Free State, and both of them right now take advantage of the zero hour, and both of them for two totally different reasons. My daughter doesn't do sports, so she, she takes a zero hour and a seventh hour, because her career goal was taking her to another app. My son does sports, so he does zero hour and then doesn't have a seventh hour, which that works best for him, 'cause he can eat, get some homework done before practices, and then, or have time to meet with teachers, administrators, or whatever. The only thing that I was gonna bring up that I've heard nobody addresses, for a lot of parents, high school students starting later helps eliminate a lot of transportation problems for the younger kids, because then your high school kids can take the younger kids to school before bringing them. And again, I think it's just about having options.
So we, we temporarily lost our faithful leader. I want to, are there other comments related to late start time from the board or Dr. Lewis?
Yes, for, for me. We can definitely, Zach is probably pulling the data right now, we can definitely bring the data back, but I will say, we will not, of course, everyone knows this, we will not get 100% of students to say, "Yes, we want to move forward with this," and we may not get a 7-0 vote, but that's okay. You heard me say it before, some of the best decisions in districts have been made on a 4-3 vote. But the thing is, is, I guess the litmus test for me has always been and always will be, is this decision that we are making or about to make in the best interest of students? If the answer is yes, then we can make it work, and we will do whatever we can to make it work. And, you know, we're fighting against a lot of different variables when it comes to improving student outcomes and making sure that we're supporting our students from a social and emotional standpoint. And if, if, I've always said, if nothing changes, well, I've always said, nothing changes if nothing changes. And so if this is our opportunity to really do something different, and I also think it lends itself for an opportunity to have some flexibility in terms of student scheduling. So we can bring back the information next week. However, I would definitely encourage the board to, let's make a decision in the best interest of students.
So with that, thank you, Dr. Lewis. With that in mind, I did hear from the board that if we were going to do it, the time that you would want the most data around was the nine o'clock time. Is that representative of the board's direction?
Yes.
Yes. So if we, if you could come back to us with a possible motion around a nine o'clock time to our December meeting, is that possible, Anna?
Absolutely. We can come back with a motion. I mean, as Dr. Lewis just said, if we need to make it happen, we will make it happen. I will, we will take some time to look at some of the things that were brought up about mitigating it and not disenfranchising students and those kind of things, and as much information we can gather between now and then the next four meetings regarding some of the options that have come up, as well as the things that we need to consider, we'll ask around that.
Shannon, did you...
I think the, the test that, a particular effort to make sure students are aware that we're gonna be talking about this...
Can you give bricks?
It's just not working. I was just asking if our principals, our building leaders, could make an effort to make sure that it's advertised to students in some way that this is gonna be on the board agenda so that they know. I don't, I do not want students to feel surprised by this. Thank you.
And I'm sure that that would include staff as well, in terms of your request. Okay, so we have direction, and we have Melissa back in time. Thank you, Melissa. We, we are now here to executive session. Can I give, yes?
I move to recess to executive session for the, did mine just, okay. I move to recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters on non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, with Dr. Anthony Lewis invited to be present, and with the board to return to open session in this room at...
Nine forty-seven.
Nine forty-seven, with no action to follow.
And at this time, I would like to thank our scholar, Sabrina Castle, for your input. Thank you for being here tonight.
You were awesome. Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.